If you wanted to use the chart, just do your usual.
And.
If you wanted to use the chat, I'll just do your usual.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held in a hybrid format in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance at the meeting are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being livestreamed. By participating in the meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? If you are joining the meeting remotely, please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Please do not use the hands up function or intervene in any other way. With members of the press and public, please not post messages in the chat. Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we're operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the provisions of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the usual way. Does any member in the chamber or attending remotely have any questions regarding this procedure? There are no questions, Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As indicated, I will now take a roll call for the minute and I would ask if members would confirm their presence when I call their name. Lord Provost.
Present.
Constable Alexander.
Constable Anderson.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Billy Dawson.
Constable Nakla.
Constable Flynn.
Constable Hunter.
Constable Lynn.
Eili Roberts.
I'm here.
Constable Rome.
Eili Soares.
Constable Short.
Here.
Constable Smith.
Constable Tolland.
Bailey Keenan.
Constable Crookshank.
Constable Finnegan.
Constable McEwan.
Constable Scullen.
Constable Shears.
Bailey Wright.
Bailey MacPherson.
Good evening, present.
Constable Coleman.
Good evening.
Constable Creighton.
I'm here.
Constable Duncan.
Here.
Eili Scott.
Here.
That concludes the roll call.
Lord Provost, members of the council, in terms of standing order sixteen, the Lord Provost has directed that item three will be dealt with first, followed by item two, then finally item four. Item three A, general business. It is with great sadness that I have to report to the city council the death of councillor Charlie Malone, ward number two, Lochie.
Thank you, Roger. The great sadness that we must pay tribute to our friend and colleague councillor Charlie Malone. I think I stand saying this if that's what you want. Charlie championed his Lochie ward in the city and had the lively community spirit he held himself, he endorsed, he pushed, he developed within the city, always striving to make Dundee a better place for all. Now see why I brought this up, it was my belly that was showing me this, so come back there.
It was evident to see Charlie's strong commitment to fairness and equality in his work and on many of the occasions in which he spoke at our council meetings. Charlie had many important roles within Dundee and made a positive contribution in his role as a lecturer in the Business School at Aberteyr University, also serving on the board of trustees for both DCA and leisure and culture at Dundee. Charlie will be remembered for his impressive oratory skills, his friendly, good-natured personality and for his tireless work for his beloved Lochie. My thoughts go out to Charlie's family and the closest to him. He will be greatly missed and to the only right that we put on the record this evening our thanks for the work Charlie undertook for this community. I would just like to say a few personal words on my own experiences in terms of Charlie. When I was the deputy Lord Provost during Covid, I made a point when I went some short walks or sitting in the garden, whatever, of making calls to all our colleagues that would answer the phone when my name came up. At that time, I wanted just to tell them I was thinking about them and to see how they were. And for most of the calls that I got through to people, and it was most people who did respond, I was on for five or ten minutes, but in my calls to Charlie, the average was probably thirty to forty minutes in a call. And they were always covering an amazing diverse list of subjects, but all with friendliness and great humour. And the reason I was phoning that was to try as deputy Lord Provost to make people think that we were thinking of them, but my conversations with Charlie ended up with me actually feeling I'd done better by Charlie speaking to me than speaking to him, and I think that summed up from my perspective Charlie. Finally, there was one particular episode that I'll always remember in the Trace House, funnily enough, whenever we're in after a maybe a meeting, sometimes I would see Charlie there and a great sense of fun prevailed from Charlie, there's no question about that. My, we were having a chat, I was getting around and no surprise, and my daughter, who's now twenty-nine, who still gets asked for proof of age at the checkouts, has come in to pick me up. So in the Trace House, it was really, really busy as always, and she comes in, so I'm getting around and I shouted over to my daughter, what would you like? Obviously it was going to be a soft drink. Charlie says to me, who's she? And I said, that's my daughter, she's a primary teacher. Before, before you could say, no, a while he was off like a shot to take her, and I took off quickly in another direction to try and get to my daughter before Charlie did. Because I said, he said, I'm going to see your daughter, I want to ask her a few questions, and I'm making a beeline as quick as I could round the other direction, having to sign to her, don't speak to him, you know. And that was Charlie, he's laughing, he was mysterious and he was winding me up when it worked. And he was a great personality and I will personally sadly miss his company, his camaraderie, his sense of fairness, and I totally respected his convictions, and that was clear to see from Friday as well. What I'm going to do now, if I may, is to open it up in a moment, I'm going to go through the group leaders first and then I will open it up if you put it on the chat, please, no other way we'll be coming in to take questions this evening. So I would like to ask Kevin if he would like to say a few words.
Thanks very much for that, Lord Provost. Whilst reflecting on the loss of a friend and a colleague, my thoughts are clearly with Charlie's family, who obviously suffer the greatest loss with losing someone so important in their life. It's very difficult to find the words having sought through his service at the service rooms in Lochie and the celebration of his life in the Lochie Club. So many excellent speakers playing tribute to Charlie and the life that they've knew Charlie living, whether it be his time in the Timex, his time at the university, his time as a lecturer, the comments that students made about how good Charlie was to them. I really reflect on his son's comments because it must be really difficult for a son to stand up and give such an account of life in the Malone household, obviously ending up with Charlie as his lecturer at one time. One of the highlights from that speech was the son sort of mentioning the fact that Charlie had an inability to die sholices. And I remember quite a time, a few times telling them that myself, and I'm sure that if councillor Scully had a pound for every time she told him, he should be loaded, you know. So just, you know, amazes me that he's went through life no far too much, but nevertheless his sholices died. Also the fact that the son made reference to Charlie's partner in crime, his granddaughter, who obviously continued to have English... continued to have English... My apologies, that's coming in a bit early. But you have gluttons anyway, Lord Provost, and you know, if we could add a bit of humour to Charlie's eulogy, then all the good, you know, because he did have a sense of humour and that's vitally important, that came out quite clearly as others spoke about his celebration of life. His daughter obviously continued to be, or his granddaughter and him continued to be very mischievous, he made reference to turning the door handles together to leave Charlie's wife Lorraine stuck in the kitchen while both of them were having a good time laughing at the carry-on and the mischief that they were up to. Obviously admired his sister Bernadette and her ability to get up and tell about the early years in the Malone household and how Charlie had a nickname of Dabber Dan, which kind of suits him quite well, for truth be known, and how women in the Timex used to take a bottle alone and stroke his hand through his hair, and as I'm doing that, I wish I could stroke my hands through my hair, but just pretty unlucky for me, there's niggas stroke through, so, you know, Charlie was a character, that's for sure. A person that will be sadly missed and a person that managed to bring his understanding of the needs of his constituents into this chamber and portray that picture really well. And I really reflect on the fact that we tried to put forward a housing emergency in the city and like it or not, there's eight thousand people on a waiting list. Charlie's reflection on that was, you're inadequately housed if you're overcrowded, and I think we really need to take that into account and maybe reflect on Charlie's words if we come back to that debate at some time, which we may well do. You know, I just think that he cared really about the people that he represented and they come before him in many occasions, desperate to get on with his work and represent his constituents. I'll just finish by saying God bless Charlie Malone and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Kevin, apologies for my machine coming on then. John.
Thank you, Lord Provost, and thank you for the opportunity to say something. I think we've all been deeply touched by Charlie's sad passing, and I had been in contact with Charlie over the months and the last message, I was going back through my phone, the last message I had from Charlie in his usual happy-go-lucky self was, John, when are we having this coffee, looking forward to it? And one of my greatest regrets will be that we never got the opportunity to sit down and have that coffee, because I know in every occasion where I had the opportunity to sit down with Charlie to have a meaningful conversation, there was so much in terms of that shared ambition for the city, that genuine warmth, that care, that consideration that he always brought to the table. I was speaking to his wife Lorraine after the celebration of his life and we were talking about his recent holiday, which again, I think was a source of some strength for Lorraine and the family, that there was many happy memories right up until the end that he was able to have with the people that he loved most in this world, and that I think we should all take some solace from. But the kind of words that were used not only during that celebration but in conversation with members of our communities amongst each other have always been words like dignity, respect, honesty, integrity, and those all were the defining characteristics of a genuinely good man, somebody who always sought to represent those values that he held very dear. And I always knew, no matter what we would discuss or whether or not we would have a disagreement, that our shared intentions were always clear, that common focus on social justice and equality, and I learned so much from Charlie, and I hope that... justice and equality, and I learned so much from Charlie, and I hope that we all did over our all-too-limited time working alongside him. But that was a theme that was very strongly represented during his funeral, and of course, his celebration of life, and rightly so, because he made his presence felt across so many areas. And I was really struck by the post by Aberteyr University on LinkedIn when they announced Charlie's sad passing. The number, the range, the huge volume of people that commented on that post and talked about how Charlie was their favourite lecturer, and that's, you know, I was never lectured by, well, I was lectured by Charlie, but in a different way, and I always took it in the way it was intended. But he was genuinely warm in everything that he did, and he saw people for what they were. He understood that people were complex and different and came with their own perspectives. And he always took you as he found you, and that was something which I always thought was the real sign of the man. He was everybody's favourite lecturer, he was many people's favourite politician, and for so many, his lasting legacy will be the impact that he had, whether that be through Timex, Dundee City Council, Aberteyr University, or the myriad of other things that he's been involved in. And I thank every day that I had the opportunity to work alongside somebody like that, of the calibre, of the genuine warmth, as I say, and the integrity that he had. And I think this council is certainly a sadder place for his departure, and it'll take a long time to fill his shoes.
Thank you, John. Fraser.
Thank you very much, Lord Provost. I and my group colleagues, and I think I can say everybody across the council and across the city are so saddened by the passing of Charlie at such a young age. I think we would all agree that Charlie was a man of deep principle and respected by all. Everyone recognised the hard work he had undertaken on behalf of the people of Lockie since being elected in 2017. But that was just part of Charlie, in the sense that he'd been, he had a lifetime of standing up for working people, pivotal role, standing up for Timex workers 30-plus years ago, and as councillor Alexander alluded to there, respected by all staff and students alike at Aberteyr University where he was employed in later years. The thing that most strikes myself and my group colleagues is just really how always friendly, chatty, and interesting Charlie was. Somebody that would never pass you by if you saw him in the street. And as you alluded to, Lord Provost, you could be chatting to him for some considerable time, he always had plenty to say, and he always was in the know as well. And one thing that I think, walking through the offices in the city square, I was sort of struck the first time I walked in after Charlie's sad passing about how much I will really miss bumping into him at our offices, because you would always have a friendly and interesting chat with Charlie. Like everyone else, our thoughts are with Charlie's family at this extremely sad time. I would just close in saying, Charlie was a unique and lovely man, and we will not see his like again. Thank you, Lord Provost.
Thank you, Fraser. And I would just point out that during Covid, you were second in the longest conversations I had when I was phoning out. Derek, please.
Thank you, Lord Provost. I was sorry to learn of Charlie's passing. I knew he'd been unwell, but I hadn't realised how unwell he was, and it came as a shock when I received the news, and I extend my condolences to his family. I think it's fitting that we pay tribute tonight to Charlie in the city chambers, as this is a place where he made many an insightful comment and spoke with passion and commitment. Charlie and I would never see eye to eye politically, and quite often he gave my party a tongue-lashing at committee, but it was never personal. We frequently came down to our offices to join the online meetings, and afterwards we'd have a chat in the corridor about how the meeting went, and he would tell me about the people he represented and served in Lockie, and the impact the council decisions would have on them. I think Charlie was a socialist to his core, but from our conversations, it seemed to me his values were based more on compassion than on political dogma, and I think that's how I'll remember him, as a compassionate person.
Thank you, thank you, Derek. Georgia.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Charlie was a loyal friend and an ally to me. He knew right from wrong and good from bad. He always seen the best in people and always wanted to do right by them. He often phoned me up to seek advice on a constituent concern, especially regarding housing issues. And sometimes he would just call me for a chat and check that I was okay. He got me, and he knew my worth. We could dweeb until the cows come home, but we would never fall out. I will miss his comradeship, his intellect, and his fond of knowledge of all things great, but above all, his kindness, his humour, and his friendship. R.I.P. Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. I call on Pete, who will be followed by George. Pete.
Thanks very much, Lord Provost. Charlie was the first person I ever spoke to when I joined the Labour Party, and it was Charlie who twisted my arm to stand for council as well, so you can blame him for me being here. Throughout my journey in the party, from an over-the-enthusiastic volunteer to an elected member, Charlie was always one of the first people that I would go to for advice, and sometimes I didn't listen, sometimes I did, but whatever I did, it turned out Charlie's advice was usually the right one all along. And I know that kind of relationship with Charlie certainly wasn't unique. If you ask anyone in our party, they'll tell you the exact same thing about him. But more than the Labour Party, Charlie was a giant in our movement overall, and he will be absolutely irreplaceable. He lives in the history of Dundee, whether it was his politics, his trade unionism, his activism, his education, his push for social justice, wherever something was happening, Charlie was there. Usually at the front, holding a banner or with a loudspeaker in his hands captivating the crowd, Charlie was the very definition of actions speak louder than words, and he demonstrated that best as a councillor for Lockie. Charlie's infectious enthusiasm, good nature, love for his city and particularly Lockie, meant he was popular and respected across the political divide, as we've heard. And while in the chamber, his disagreements with our colleagues in the other parties were always passionate, articulate, and sometimes a little longer than necessary, outside of the chamber, he was a friend, a confidant, an educator, and a role model to all of us. He would work with anyone if he felt it was the right thing for his constituents, and I know in particular that he did value his relationships with Alan Shevorn, and especially Rashim when it came to working for the best of Lockie. The phrase 'one of the good ones' has been used a lot in tributes to Charlie, but I would argue he's more than that, he was one of the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. George, followed by Lynne. George.
Thanks, Lord Provost. I'll keep it brief. We've heard Charlie's contributions have been well documented at the celebration of life on Friday and here at council, to the people of Lockie, to the people of Dundee as well. For me personally, Charlie was a good friend and comrade for many years within the trade union movement and the Labour Party. We both were elected in 2017 together, and prior to that, Charlie was the chair of the Dundee Labour Party, and I was his second-in-command secretary, it was a double act. I'll no comment any further on that. I will miss his wit and his humour, I'll miss his valued advice and the guidance he gave me over the years through good and through bad. And I'll also miss our post-committee meeting pint in the trades bar, where on occasion we did see the Lord Provost. And we would regularly have our unofficial debrief on what shenanigans went on that evening. But before we went anyplace, however, we used to go through a quick Charlie checklist, and we've touched on it earlier, it was, Charlie, have you got your specs? Yes, he would reply. Have you got your keys now? Yes. Have you got your wallet? There was three or four seconds silence, and he did say yes nonetheless. And by the way, your shoelace is undone. To that, he just smirked, and I don't think the shoelace was ever done, I think it was in a constant state of undoneness, if there's ever such a word. And we heard about that on many occasions on the celebration of life on Friday. Like others, I'll dearly miss Charlie, but won't forget about him, and the fond memories I have of him will last. Rest in peace, comrade.
Thank you, George. Lynne, followed by Siobhan.
Thank you, Lord Provost. I always worry when I see an email from Roger, and when I saw the email about tonight, and it said, the late Charlie Malone, it really brought it home. It's really difficult to be here and listen, because a man for all seasons is very much what Charlie was, and he was also a man that used to follow me. I did a B in commerce, and Charlie did a B in commerce, and I got elected, and Charlie got elected, and we used to tease each other about the fact that there was a lady called Mary Scanlon, and Mary Scanlon taught us both economics, and I don't know which one caused her the most bother, because she eventually became a Conservative MSP, and I could imagine her having me and Charlie at different times in the front row, giving her a wee bit of trouble for her preaching. But seriously, Charlie was a man for all seasons, and I was genuinely proud when Charlie asked me to go to Aberteyr and work with his students on a number of occasions. He also spoke to my son about the benefits of going to Aberteyr, and he caught me once, probably a good thing, and I know that you're over here from the newspapers, so don't listen to this one. I was outside the trades one day, and we're having a good conversation, and I tried to explain to Charlie that I had a socialist heart, just like he had, but I also supported independence, and he said, Lynne, never again say that you're nationalist socialist. So Charlie was never afraid to pick you up and keep you right, no matter what party you were in. So God love you, Charlie, I'll miss you, and all my best to your family.
Thank you, Lynne. Siobhan, followed by Stephen.
Yeah, thank you. I'll try and keep it quick as well. Charlie was always one of these people that I kind of knew on, you know, the borders, and it was one of those kind of things that we'd never ever quite met, but I kind of think we knew of each other, we'd actually worked on similar projects but still had never met. And the first time we met was when I was doing a talk in Lockie, celebrating Mary Brooks' bank, and he came up and he said, that was actually brilliant, Siobhan, and he went, it's Charlie, and I said, I know who you are, no kind of thing, so it was one of those things. But, you know, one of the things, I think, for me and Charlie, it was that, I wish I'd really got to know him better, and it's one of the regrets, I think, that I had, and it was one of those things that, as he became more ill, it was that, do you want to have a coffee? But he was just too ill to have that, so it's one of the regrets that I'm left with. One of the last conversations I had, he'd phoned me, and we ended up talking about, you know, just those kind of values, I think, that we both have, and I think that for myself, and I hope Charlie felt that as well, I think we did both come from the same socialist roots, albeit evolving in a different path. So I was left thinking after that phone call, strangely enough, about the Labour Party's 1945 manifesto, and how it was relevant for Charlie's values, but how it was also relevant for mine, albeit maybe more historical for me. So actually, with respect for Charlie, I'm going to read a little bit of the Labour Party 1945 manifesto for him. Health of the nation and its children. By good food and good homes, much avoidable ill health can be prevented. In addition to the best health services should be free for all. Money must no longer be a passport to the best treatment. In the new national health service, there should be health centres where people may get the best the modern science can offer. More and better hospitals and proper conditions for our doctors and nurses. More research is required into the causes of disease and ways to prevent and cure it. Labour will work specifically for the care of Britain's mothers and their children. Children's allowance and school medical and feeding services, better maternity and child welfare services. A healthy family life must be fully ensured, and parenthood must not be penalised if the population of Britain is to be prevented from dwindling. I think just finally, me and Charlie matched together a lot of times, and one of the matches that we both led was the match from the Food Ladder in Lockie to the monument celebrating Mary Brooks' bank against poverty. And I think that that's where we both have a lot in common, and I think that's where Charlie's legacy will lead, is that anti-poverty, that genuine dedication to the wellbeing of the people that he represented.
Thank you, Siobhan. Stephen, please.
Thanks, Lord Provost. I wasn't actually intending on speaking, but I just realised that I wouldn't be able to get through the next committee if I didn't say something just now, get something out. I think I've said before about Charlie's cheeky smile, and a lot of people said that, he actually strongly reminded me of one of my brothers, who you could actually be annoyed at, and not annoyed at at the same time, funny enough as it is. And I think John alluded to it earlier, the number of people that had left comments online following Aberteyr's post about his passing, and that obviously says something, but it is in some respects easy to put posts online. I think what says a lot more is the shared number of people that turned up for his service on Friday, physically turned up, and I think that shows you the high esteem that Charlie was held in.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there anyone else we'd like to speak? I would just like to close by saying, I can't believe he's not here this evening. But from what everybody is saying, Charlie Malone is with us right now in spirit, and as long as we are here in the city chambers and think about him, Charlie will always remain with us, I don't think there's any doubt about that. I'm going to ask if we can have a minute's silence, sitting down, it's against my instinct to sit down, but when I stood up and saw my belly on the screen, I know why we're not going to stand up. But could I ask us, please, to have one minute's silence in memory of the late, great councillor, Charlie Malone, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Roger, please.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Item 3B, Ward Number Two, Lockie, election arrangements. On reference to item A above, the chief executive, as returning officer, will make arrangements for the filling of the resultant vacancy. The city council are asked to note the position.
Is that agreed? Thank you, Roger.
Item 3C, Ward Number One, Strathmartin, election arrangements. It is reported that councillor John Alexander has given notice of his resignation with effect from midnight on 29th August 2024. The chief executive, as returning officer, will make arrangements for the filling of the resultant vacancy. The city council are asked to note the position.
Is that agreed, Hasman? Thank you. There will be an opportunity to pay tribute to councillor Alexander after the City Governance Committee later this evening. Roger, please.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Item two, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Thank you. Are these agreed? Thank you. Roger.
Item four, appointment to membership of standing committees and outside bodies. A, licensing committee. It is reported that councillor Scullan has submitted her resignation as a trained substitute of the above committee. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this position.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any nominations?
Lord Provost, move councillor Finnegan.
Thank you, George. Councillor Finnegan is nominated. Roger, Danny the Second, are at the stage?
Not at the stage, Lord Provost.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. That concludes the business of City Council. Thank you.
Okay, I think this is all sorted now. So welcome to the Fair Work, Edna, Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Can I get the first item, please, Arlene?
Thanks, convenor. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Don't see any declarations. Councillor McDevon, can see you put move in the chat.
This is the last item, Chair.
Oh, yeah, apologies for that, George. Okay. We move to the second item then, please, Arlene.
Thank you. Item two, civic government in Scotland Act, street names, new residential development at Woodfield Drive. This is for approval.
Thank you, Arlene. Does anyone want to speak on this item? No, can this be agreed then? Thank you. Next item, please, Arlene.
Item three, annual road safety report and 20 mile per hour progress report. This is for approval.
So this item provides a summary of progress towards national road casualty reduction targets and seeks approval of a programme of road safety improvements. The report also provides updates on the monitoring of school street zones and the progression of 20 mile per hour zones. And I can see we've got quite a few questions on this item. So councillor Duncan, I think you're first.
Thanks, convenor. I hope things are going well for you, you, Lynne. This seem to be working here. So just before this sorts my memory, can I make a request before I ask my question? And it's basically, I think it'd be a good idea for myself and possibly other elected members if we could have perhaps a higher definition map of the ones contained in Appendix C. The ones that we've got at present are not of very high definition, I don't think. So that's just a request to officers. My question really is around about the 20 mile per hour zones, which myself and my group colleagues are have always been keen on for the number of years in appropriate areas, you know, for example, wholly or almost wholly residential areas. And I see that a number of such areas in my ward are featured, such as Camp Hill Road, Barnhill, Fort Hill, Clearwater, et cetera. So that's all, that's all to the goods. Obviously, there's going to be phases here and there's going to be costs involved. And I'm really seeking clarity about the cost per phase. And also, are these costs currently factored into departmental budgets? Because obviously, it's all very well asked, this sort of thing, but we need the money to back it up.
Thanks for your request and question, councillor Duncan. Pass it over to Mr McNorton to answer that. I'd imagine the map would be quite easy, but Mr McNorton?
Thank you, convenor. The cost per budget comes in at around about £150,000 per phase. And the budget is noted at the start of the report is from external funding. It's predominantly coming from Transport Scotland funding, which is single year budgeting, which is the reason why there aren't years against the phases from three to seven. Because that funding will fluctuate and the design of the 20 mile an hour programme will match the super budgets.
Thanks, Mr McNorton. Does that answer your question, councillor Duncan?
Can I just have another follow-up question, really? Because I hear from what Mr McNorton says. Just wondering, insofar as he knows, do we know when each of the phases would ideally be implemented by?
As soon as possible. It is very much dependent on the funding that comes through. There's a number of competing priorities, as is detailed in the report for road safety. We're trying to tackle a combination of improvements to pedestrian safety with pedestrian crossings, reducing speed limits and also tackling accident cluster sites as well. Again, depending on the funding that comes through and the other priorities in the year, we'll look at it on a one-year annual programme basis, which fits in with the one-year annual cycle of funding as well.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, Mr McDonald. Thanks, councillor Duncan, again, for the question. Councillor McDevon, please.
Thanks, Chair. Feedback from local residents, primarily in the coal side ward. The current enforcement of the traffic restriction orders, traffic order restrictions, sorry, is very much piecemeal. So a couple of questions for officers is, it mentions on page nine of the report, they have regular meetings with Police Scotland. How regular are these meetings? And what cast iron assurances can we get from Police Scotland? Considering they've got their own dwindling workforce, that appropriate enforcement will actually take place.
Thanks for the question, councillor McDevon. I can actually assure you that the person that I've interviewed several times to Police Scotland is on that very issue of resources. And obviously I have sympathies with them for their resources, but clearly our priority is safety around the school street zone. So that's very much a priority. But, Mr McNorton?
Yeah, thank you, convenor. So we have a number of different forms where we meet with representatives of Police Scotland. From an operational basis, we do meet with the area sergeants on the particular enforcement of locality policing. In terms of their enforcement schedule, they gave us figures for the most recent school term, the April to June school term. And they undertook on the 13 school street zones, 27 patrols and issued five tickets, five fines for violating the traffic restrictions. Again, that's something that we're monitoring in conjunction with them. And the hope is that over time the compliance does increase.
Does that satisfy your question, councillor McDevon? Yeah, okay. Councillor Cradon, please.
Thank you, convenor. I note that the proposal in Appendix D for the proposed junction improvements on Riverside Avenue are right avenue. Given constituent concerns that have come to me and councillor MacPherson about the difficulty of kind of navigating right avenue as it is, especially during peak times. Can I just ask for some detail about the proposals as we're likely to get this from constituents going forward?
Not sure if you're in a position to give that, but, Mr McNorton?
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Some of the details of the scheme is still being developed. I'm happy to ask one of our officers to give you a fuller briefing once those preliminary designs have been worked up. And again, we'll share those with all the ward councillors in the West End.
Many thanks. Okay, thanks, Mr Cradon. Councillor Finn, please.
Thank you, convenor. Convenor, just following from councillor McDevon with regards to the school street zones, first of all, if that's okay. I think I'd like to know a bit more of what Police Scotland are going to do to enforce this. Because without their enforcement, this is going to be difficult to actually make it any better than it actually is. And in the coal side campus, for example, 105 on average. Now, obviously, that's an average value, so you can take it, there will be a heck of a lot more on occasions and sometimes less, obviously. And I think it's important that we actually understand how they're going to help enforce this. Because the last sentence in 8.4, for example, we're working on visual and interactive aspects of school street zones to promote compliance. Which raises concerns whether the zones are actually clear enough for drivers in the first place. And as I understand, they were. All the signages are in the right place. That's been confirmed in previous committees. And it really gets down to enforcement by Police Scotland. And I think I really like to know what discussions you have on a regular basis. But are we seeing any positive discussions with regards to the enforcement side of things?
Thanks, councillor Finn. Just to reiterate, obviously, the department and myself have been regularly engaging with Police Scotland. I agree completely with yourself and with constituents are in it to be that enforcement needs to be a key part of what happens going ahead. And we have had more commitment recently for greater enforcement. But, Mr McNorton, can you elaborate a bit on that?
Yeah, thank you, convenor. That's correct. Police Scotland have committed since the initial design of the scheme to enforce it and throughout the implementation phases as well. As has been noted, there are competing pressures, but they are sharing details with us on their enforcement on a quarterly basis at the end of each term. And again, it's pleasing, I'm not pleasing to see, but it's positive to see that the fines, so we've moved out of the encouragement and educational phase. And they are issuing more fines to drivers now as well. So we'll continue to monitor and we'll continue to report to committee. And we hope to see these compliance figures come down in future reports.
Councillor Finn?
Yeah, thanks, convenor. And I take on board what you're saying. I really hope that Police Scotland take on board the comments as well, because they're really important that we actually see partnership and making sure these work. And just an additional one, if that's okay, convenor, on page 12, graph three, we're seeing the serious casualties and the five-year moving average increasing year on year for the last few years. And the target's quite low. And I'm concerned that we're actually going in the right direction to make sure we reach our target with the increase over the last few reports. And just like the officers reassurance that the interventions that we're actually putting in place are monitored to make sure the assets are seeing a difference, but what actions are you going to take to make sure we meet this target set by the Scottish government?
Mr McNorton?
Yeah, convenor. It's noted in the report, it's a multi-agency approach to road safety. Road infrastructure does play a part in that and improvements that we can make to it. We do monitor the accident cluster site interventions that we do for accident data in the years ahead. To reach these ambitious targets of a 50% reduction by 2030 and then on to zero accidents in Scotland, across Scotland, it does require interventions by all, which is noted in the report and is extracted from the road safety framework. Education, enforcement, behaviour, there's a number of things in there. A number of the accidents aren't caused by road infrastructure, can't be solved by road infrastructure. They're very much related to driver behaviour. We still have educational issues, we've stopped lookless accidents for pedestrians. And unfortunately, drivers not paying attention, not paying sufficient alertness to dangers on the road and hazards continues to play a factor as well. So we will continue to tackle the accident cluster sites and try and make the junctions and link roads as safe and forgiving as possible where accidents do occur. But unfortunately, it does take a range of interventions by a number of stakeholders to make this work and the public as a whole.
Thank you, Mr McNorton. Billy Scott, please.
My question's about enforcement of the 20 mile an hour zones as well, convenor, which has been dealt with. But it's something that's raised with me constantly about the 20 mile an hour zone in the centre of Brophy Ferry. But I'd also like to ask what consultation is done with the police when you're proposing a new 20 mile an hour zone? And whether they suggest engineering solutions to it? And if they do, are any of those taken forward?
I believe they're consulted as part of tiaros for that, but let Mr McNorton go into that.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. So Police Scotland are well established, consultees on the specific tiaros of traffic regulation orders for each zone where they're introduced. And again, we do take on board any feedback, but they are supportive of the moves that we're doing. In addition to that, they're also consulted on the council's policy, which was set out in 2016 for implementation of 20 mile an hour zones. And further to that as well, the national policy, they're consulted on for how to implement 20 mile an hour zones. And again, both the national and local policies are both in tandem about the practice of introducing 20 mile an hour zones on suitable roads where speeds are relatively low. And also introducing it without further additional traffic coming with a signage only approach.
Thanks, Mr McNorton. Did that answer your question, Billy Scott?
It does, convenor, but it seems to me that would so that would certainly help with the enforcement.
Thank you. I've got councillor Anderson.
Thank you, convenor. My question is around pedestrian
Other theme I need to put it back on?
Sorry, didn't touch it. Right. Yeah, pedestrians are top of the hierarchy in terms of promoting active travel. And I was seeing in here that there had been an assessment of a number of pedestrian crossings that did not meet the current threshold. And I checked the earlier report and saw that the threshold had been broadened to give people more time to cross the road if they had disabilities. So I was just wondering, you know, how do you instigate a survey? I'm somebody who walks around Dundee all the time and play with the cars on a daily basis. So how do you instigate a survey to see if a pedestrian crossing is helpful?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we take requests in from members of the public. We also take them in from elected members, community councils, and we will investigate them. If a survey's been undertaken within the last two years, we'll report the figures back. And if it hasn't, then we'll undertake a new survey. As noted in the report, we've undertaken a lot of surveys this year. That's on top of the 100 other existing survey sites, which is featured in the last year's committee report as well. The instrument level is broadly common throughout Scotland. And again, there's a set policy for undertaking the surveys and how these are evaluated. It's very much defined on ability to cross, so it's the opportunity to cross. And again, it's partly due to there is sufficient time to cross the road. It's just you may have to wait for a longer gap for it. We do have around about 150 sets of traffic lights in Dundee. And again, there's a cost, both in terms of installing them and what we can afford to do against the other competing budget priorities like 20 mile an hour accident cluster sites. And there's also an ongoing revenue cost to maintaining and replacing these traffic lights when they come to the end of their useful life.
Thanks, Mr McNorton. So if you can answer your question, councillor Anderson? Yeah, thank you. Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks very much, convenor. Just going back to the question that councillor Duncan had regarding the rollout of 20 mile an hour zones and the cost per zone and the overall cost as we move further phases forward. I was in touch with the chief executive last week following the Cabinet Secretary for Finances warnings about what looked somewhat very much like a freeze or as near to a freeze on uncommitted spending from Scottish government going forward. Now, obviously, the funding we're talking about, I mean, the department is obviously using funding from both Transport Scotland and Sustrans for a number of projects, this included. And clearly, there's the potential for agencies like Transport Scotland to see going forward freezes or reductions in budget. Mr Colgan very kindly said he would speak with Mr Emmett and update as information became available. And I'm very conscious of the fact that the announcement was only very recent. But my plea is that as things become clearer, specifically with regard to the whole issue of road safety and the funding of the projects alluded to in item three, but also in the wider context of council funding. I would be grateful if I and indeed all other of the members of the council are kept updated by officers as they hear further from that in relation to Scottish government and its agencies. Thank you, convenor.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. As you allude to, the funding environment is changing all the time. So it's a very difficult picture and we need to react quickly. But I think you're perfectly correct. Members need to be kept informed. So, you know, as changes come through, I'll ask that's cascaded throughout the council. Thank you. Bailey Keenan?
My question was very similar to that raised by Bailey McPherson.
My question was very similar to that raised by Bailey McPherson in relation to officers. And Mr McNamara has said that, you know, these are the funds that are available. Given the cabinet secretary's announcement that she'll be looking to cut back and save money for the recent wage deal that was involved in settling. The other comment I was considering making is that given the numbers of questions that have been asked about the enforcement from Police Scotland, indeed from councillor Flynn and Bailey Scott and councillor McCaffery. I think we should suggest that the chief executive write to the head of Police Scotland and look for that reassurance. I've certainly got concerns and constituents have concerns about the safety around our parking zones at schools. And, you know, the regular is we don't see many police there enforcing anywhere. So I'm wondering if we could get an agreement that we can ask the chief executive to get some level of update for the head of police for this area or Police Scotland for this area so that there is something that we could expect by way of enforcement.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. I'm perfectly happy to do that. And as I said previously in response to other questions, we have had regular engagement with Police Scotland, we have had a commitment to be more engaged in terms of their appearance in the school street zone. And whilst I've got sympathy for the resource constraints, we need to make sure it's properly placed. But I've got no problem with the chief executive writing to ask that question as well.
Thanks, Mr McKeenan and convenor.
I've got councillor McQ next.
I have more of a comment than a question. I understand and appreciate that a range of interventions are needed to make improvements in these numbers. But it's clear from the charts that nothing much is changing. It's either staying the same or where there is a change, it's a deterioration. And so we do need a range of interventions. Have we got the right ones? Because if you look at the five year average, just going in the same direction largely, that concerns me.
Mr McNamara?
Of note, and again, in the context of the national picture, some of these road accidents are relatively low. And we've come down a long way. If you track it from the baseline of early two thousands, we have come down a long way in terms of accidents. We get into the harder to reach areas, which again are very much linked to behaviour change in road users and how we interact with the road network. There's noted previously, there is only so much that road infrastructure can actually play in this part, and as noted in the report, is a multi-agency approach that's needed in terms of education enforcement and other technology innovations as well with vehicles. But to reach the target of zero accidents is very, very difficult with road infrastructure alone. You can't bubble wrap everything effectively. So it does need road users to behave differently. Again, it's a lot of it's simple things, stop, look, listen, pedestrian accidents. And again, driver alertness and so forth, and improving vehicle technology for some of the innovations that are coming on the market with new vehicles.
That's Mr McNamara. Does that answer your question? That's absolutely, councillor McQ. Thank you. And with that, can this report be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Alan.
That takes us on to item four, review of permitted development rights in conservation areas. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this report seeks approval to cancel the current Article Four directions restricting permitted development rights in cities' conservation areas. These directions are no longer required due to changes in national legislation, but mean many alterations or minor works in conservation areas that were previously permitted development now require planning permission. A very exciting report. Does anyone have any questions on it? Oh, Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, convenor. I appreciate this is simply a tidying up exercise, but I would just be grateful if officers could clarify for me. And does the abolition, if you like, of Article Four directions change anything in relation to current permitted development rights in conservation areas? And also, assuming that we agree this tonight, and I'm pretty sure that we will, as I say, I think we would all agree it's just a tidying up exercise. Could officers give a very brief overview of the difference then that there would be in conservation areas vis a vis all the properties in Dundee that are not in one of the seventeen conservation areas? Just so we're quite clear, what the difference in permitted development rights is between non-conservation areas and conservation areas?
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I'll bring in Mr Gray to answer that.
Thanks, convenor. And the permitted development rights are set out in legislation, quite a lengthy piece of leg legislation. And generally speaking, they are more onerous in conservation areas than they are out with. That's not always been the case, and hence why we've had Article Four directions put in place. Since those Article Four directions have been put in place, we have, or the government has amended the general permitted development rights order, which has brought back into control a lot of the minor development that the convenor referred to into planning control. Examples include small extensions to houses, so there are smaller permitted development rights in conservation areas, boundary treatments, fences, streetworks that the council carries out itself. So there will still be a differences between conservation areas and out with conservation areas. But they will be controlled by the legislation rather than the Article Fours.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Bailey McPherson?
It does, and very succinctly. So grateful to Mr Gray, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on this item? I don't see any. Oh, sorry, councillor Flynn.
That's good, convenor. I agree with Bill McPherson's probably likely to go through, no problem. I'm just worried about clarity with regards to the traffic. This report's about cancelling Article Four. Yeah, in four point six, it says it would not prevent the council on acting Article Four. Can we just get that clarity on why we still need Article Four then?
Is it great?
Thank you. Yeah, we are conscious that the legislation changes frequently. And so we don't know what the future holds. It may be that in the future permitted development rights change again in conservation areas. And it might be that the council wishes to exercise control over certain issues. Therefore, paragraph four point six explains that the cancellation of these ones doesn't prevent us in the future from introducing Article Fours, should there be a need.
That's clear, okay. I don't see any further questions, so can this be agreed? Thank you. I'll say that as agreement. Next item, please, Alan.
Item five, traffic signal maintenance regional procurement. This is for approval.
So this item seeks approval, as Alan just said, to participate in a regional procurement administered by Angus Council's lead authority for the supply of traffic signal maintenance and upgrade services. Just give a moment to see if there's any questions on this one. I don't see any questions in the chat, so can this be agreed? Agreed? Okay, next item, please.
Item six, engineering consultancy procurement sourcing strategy. This is also for approval.
So this item seeks approval of a procurement sourcing strategy for consultancy services delivered traffic modeling and active travel project design work. Bailey McPherson, I can see you've got an amendment.
Yeah, convenor, it's just in terms of consistency, because our group has taken the view for a long time that the point at which matters should be delegated to officers should be at a lower level than half a million pounds, which we think in terms of transparency, we feel it is better that anything over two hundred thousand pounds comes back to committee. Now, we agree with the point, Mr Presswood has made the point before, that tiny amounts, I think he alluded to, you know, toilet block at ten thousand pounds. We're not suggesting for a moment that the more minor amounts are delegated. But we feel in terms of making sure we have the best possible transparency, that that the limit should be at two hundred thousand. Now, officers, I'm sure, will circulate the amendment committee services, have it. But basically, to speed us up, it simply involves item two one B on line three being changed from five hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. The rest of the whole report, no problem with the rest of the report at all. The rest of the report would remain as it is, but we would just have that slight amendment to two hundred thousand pounds if committee were so minded. I think councillor Coleman is happy to second me.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions. I'll bring in councillor Coleman just now. Councillor Coleman?
I'm happy to formally second. I have nothing to add to what my colleague Bailey McPherson has said.
Thank you for being brief, councillor Coleman. I can see Bailey Keenan, you've got questions. Well, that was good. I'll ask Mr Many just to clarify where we are in terms of the procurement, but I believe it's on specific items. But, Mr Many?
Thank you, convenor. As members of the council will be aware, the council has a provision called the six month rule, which indicates that in the event that an item is dealt with, then no substantially different items should be dealt with within a period of six months, except with the approval of a majority of members of the council. I take the view that this is a separate contract and therefore it is a separate issue to which the six month rule would not apply.
Thank you, Mr Many. So given that there are no other questions, I'll be moving the report as is. I note Bailey Keenan and Bailey McPherson's position. However, there are two current opportunities in order to see this. We've got this at procurement stage and then this as a tender stage. What we've seen in recent years, and indeed Bailey McPherson alluded to, is a fast changing funding landscape and one that officers need to react to quickly. And I don't believe this fundamentally adds anything to bring it back to a second hearing. So I'll be moving the report as is. Do I have a second for this?
Sorry, I'll second that.
Thank you. So I'll just go straight to the vote now, please.
Thanks, convenor. The motion by the convenor, seconded by councillor Troland, is that the report be agreed as submitted. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Coleman, is circulated. Convenor?
Motion.
Councillor Alexander. Councillor Anderson.
Alan, can you switch your mic off, please? I think stopping people coming in.
Lord Provost. Deputy Lord Provost. Bailey Dawson. Councillor Flynn. Councillor Hunter. Councillor Lynn. Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Bailey Sawers. Councillor Short. Councillor Smith. Councillor Troland. Bailey Keenan. Councillor Cruchank. Councillor Finney. Councillor McHugh. Councillor McCarvin. Councillor Scullen. Councillor Shears. Bailey Wright. Bailey McPherson.
Amendment.
Alan, sorry, can I stop briefly? Bailey McPherson, you've got point of order.
The point of order is simple. For those of us who are hybrid and not in the chamber, for a start, and Bailey Roberts has correctly pointed this out in the text already. We can't hear some of the contributions, for example, nobody remotely heard Bailey Keenan's question there. But more to the point, we cannot hear, apart from people who are also hybrid, we cannot hear what the vote is going. And I think it's vitally important that there is a complete level playing field between people who are in the chamber and people who are hybrid. We can't have a situation where we can't hear the vote. And thus far, the only person I've heard frankly is myself. So, and I know from others that that is the situation for anybody who's hybrid, as Bailey Roberts has alluded to. I think you might just want to finish the vote just now, but I'm sure officers will take this concern on board.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. I'm going to bring the chief executive to this point.
Thanks, convenor. I think we're experiencing just some challenges tonight, where the committee clerk is switching her mic off, but elected members are coming in quicker. So the committee clerk will switch their mic off. And then if there's a pause, that will allow the elected member being called to activate their microphone to give the direction that they're looking for the committee services to take. And hopefully that will address the problem that we've just encountered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Colgan. As yourself, Bailey McPherson and Bailey Keenan have already pointed out, we're due some teething problems tonight, and I would be the first committee to experience that, which is great. But I think we'll just continue the vote from here on, Alan. Thanks.
Okay, councillor Coleman?
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott. So that's fourteen for the motion and thirteen for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Thank you, Alan. We'll move the next item, please.
Item seven, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for approval.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a total of four tenders, the combined expenditure in the region of two point three six million for construction and infrastructure works across the city. These tenders include inspection and testing of heating and ventilation control systems, replacement of the goods and passenger lift at DCA, Brophy Ferry Demone Heath active travel, Esplanade resurfacing and crossings, and St Mary's and Leonard's drainage strategy active travel design consultancy commission. If any questions on this item, councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr Gavina. With regard to the St Mary's and St Leonard's Drainage Strategy Active Travel Proposals, assuming committee agreement tonight of the design stage tender, what is the timescale for actual delivery of both the substantive finalized drainage improvements and the associated active travel element? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. But bringing Mr McNamara or Mr Martin, see which one can answer.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks for the question, councillor Coleman. Both elements of that, in terms of the time scales, they're still to be developed. And it'll be after appointment of the consultants that we're able to finalize a development part of the programme and be able to feedback what the time scales are likely to be.
Thank you. Grateful if officers could keep me updated.
Thank you. I'm sure they will, councillor Coleman. I've got councillor Shears next, please.
Thanks very much, convenor. My question's on the ongoing work to the Esplanade, of course, will welcome the investment coming in and what's going on down there. It looks fantastic. Residents understand but are frustrated why roads are needing to be closed fairly regularly. The main question they have is why are we doing the Esplanade in such staggered ways? It seems as soon as one thing's open, another thing's closed. Is it just a case of we need to apply for funding and grants, or is there more to it as to why it's so staggered along the Esplanade?
I don't believe it's a grant issue. I believe it's practicality issue, but Mr McNamara, correct, correct me if I'm wrong? Or Mr Martin, either of which could jump in.
Thanks, convenor. Thanks for the question, councillor Shears. Essentially, it is just programming of construction works and looking to take a logical sequential approach and ensure that disruption is to a minimum, albeit clearly there always is some disruption when works are involved. And in terms of where what are coming, obviously, to the end of the work, so any disruption will be over in the near future with the project then being finalized.
Thank you, Mr Martin. Does that answer your question, councillor Shears? Thank you. Thank you. Don't see any further questions on this, so can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Arlene.
Thanks, convener. Items eight to eleven, tenders received by head of design and property. Due to the time scales involved, these were dealt with under delegated powers and for noting only.
Thank you, Arlene. Is there any questions on this? Don't see any questions, so can this be agreed? That's agreement, thank you. Next, please, Arlene.
That takes us to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with it in the usual way?
Let's commit us to it. Wish to deal with this in usual manner? Agreed. That takes us to the end of the Fair Work, Economic, and Infrastructure Committee. Thank you.
Can I suggest to committee members that we take a quick five-minute recess to allow people to fill up their cups on the toilet? So we will reconvene at eighteen twenty-three. Ask everyone to please reconvene. I think everyone has returned. Thank you all very much. So, welcome to city governance. We will kick on with the agenda, please, Willie.
Okay, thank you very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
No notification of a declaration, so we'll take that as a no. Oh, apologies. Councillor Finnigan. Oh, no, sorry, councillor Coleman, first of all.
Thank you, Mr convener. Just in terms of item two, I remain a member of Unison. I thought I would declare that.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Finnigan?
Just to say that I'm also a member of Unison and I sit on the board for the DND eighty clear.
Thank you very much. We'll take those as given, so if there are any other indications. Thank you very much, Willie. Back to you.
Thank you very much, convener. That takes you on to item two, Unison's End Violence at Work Charter. This item has been placed on the agenda, requested councillors Troland and Flynn.
I will hand immediately over to councillor Troland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very pleased to note that Dundee City Council are going to sign up to Unison's End Violence at Work Charter. I'm just going to, if it's the next page down, I mean, where the charter is, thank you. Just going to put it online just in case next one, yeah, in case the next one, sorry, that was me. There we go. Just in case anybody has had time to read it or anything, but basically, so we've, violence in the workplace is obviously clearly a huge problem, and Unison had created this and has been creating this charter based on quite harrowing statistics, actually. So one of the things that Unison wants us to think about is to get away from the idea that violence is part of the job. It's not part of the job and it never should be. Feeling safe at work and being safe at work is something that we should all demand and certainly not aspire to, but we should be demanding that. So the Unison twenty-three Scotland Workplace Violence Report suggested that there was fifty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-four violent incidents taking place against public service staff up to the year twenty, March twenty twenty-three. So statistically, about twenty percent of us or thereabouts, according to European statistics, will have experienced some kind of violence within the workplace. European studies suggest that about twelve point five percent of people experience violence, but women, of course, are forty percent higher. So there is a gendered element of violence at work here. It's like ten percent of men in European statistics, but fifteen percent of women experience violence. Now, this is in part, I think, because women experience more sexual harassment, more bullying and so forth, but also because women tend to work more in front-facing sectors and more in healthcare sectors than the care sector, specifically health service and protective services across Europe, two to three times more likely to experience violence. If you work in the care industry, you're two times as likely to experience violence as well. Care is clearly a female-dominated industry too. It's not a surprise that it's come from Unison. Three-quarters of Unison members are female. In addition to that, of course, we have other inequalities. We have our BAME community that experiences high level of violence, as is our disabled colleagues and our LGBTQ plus colleagues as well. So there's a lot of inequalities in the violence that we experience within the workplace. Now, the Unison twenty-three Workplace Violence Report, it wasn't just the harrowing statistics, it was the issues around dealing with that. What they found was that there were clear issues with incident report and procedures, a lack of awareness and proper policies, a lack of up-to-date training and development for staff in these vital areas. There was also a lack of risk assessments and the risk assessment's been updated, along with, and I think quite importantly, a lack of proper debriefs taking place for staff following a vital incident. You'll notice if the charter goes right to the bottom, one of the things that Unison want to, or ask that employers do, is take responsibility for some counselling services and support for the victims that have experienced these violent incidents. So it's great that we're doing this. I was writing the speech and I kept thinking about Charlie and I don't want to kind of, I kept thinking about Charlie because I kept thinking that he would probably be one of the first ones to not only support this charter, but to kind of push us to go further and to kind of demand that we support all people and all victims of violence and not just have a charter where it's paperwork, but actually to kind of make sure that we actively take support and actively kind of process this and train people properly and take an act of encouragement against violence in the work. So I think that, I feel Charlie in this motion to a certain extent, because I think he'd be one of the first ones to kind of support this and demand that we do better. So I would like to ask that not only do we, you know, adopt this charter, but actually kind of make sure that we use the statistics that we gather, use the information and the charter that we use in order to make sure that we reduce violence actively within the workplace. I'm actually just going to end with a note of solidarity to the million-plus Indian doctors that have gone on strike over the last couple of days demanding protection in lieu of a female doctor who was raped and murdered while she was on shift. A million doctors went on strike demanding that they be protected against violence in the workplace. I'm also going to note a note of solidarity to the Olympian boxer, Amin Khalif, who has put in, asked the French police to investigate acts of aggravated cyber harassment. You may realise this case, but she had been deliberately misgendered and then subject to a case of, as her lawyer said, misogynistic, racist and sexist cyberbullying. These are two quite extreme, I think, examples that show not only the international element of violence in the workplace, but also that violence can take place online. It's not just physical violence, it could be violence online in terms of cyberbullying and aggravation, with sex death threats and came from people working within the Olympics as well, just as an aside. So solidarity to the women that are trying to fight against violence and all people that are trying to fight against violence. And I would like us to accept this charter, put this charter in place and take an active role in reducing violence within the workplace.
Very much, councillor Troland. If you can switch your microphone off, thank you. I'll come to councillor Flynn and then back to Bailey Keenan for his question. Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks, Siobhan, for such an expression of real depth of why we should be doing this. I think the background of violence at charter work, as Unison defines violence at work as any incident in which an employee is abused, threatened or assaulted in circumstances related to their work. These incidents include staff being punched, pushed and kicked as an example. This is totally unacceptable in many ways, and I think we should not be looking for any of our employees to be in this situation at all. And I think the charter is quite clear. Siobhan's went through the whole process of what the charter actually provides, and I think we would be hoping that the chamber unanimously accepts this, because it actually gives a, puts a message out that we protect our employees, we realise our employees are so important to the work they do in our communities, and I look for the chamber to support the motion put forward.
Thank you for both those contributions. I think it goes without saying, I mean, our employees are the council, they are our communities, they are our constituents, our residents, and we need to make sure that we very visibly and vocally stand in their corner when they are presented with those types of harms in the workplace as well, and it can never be acceptable. Bailey Keenan, I'll come to you next.
Thanks. I'm more than happy to support the motion to accept Unison's Violence Charter. I think it's really important, though, that we get some information back to council about the level of incidents that perhaps happened in council, so as we can drive that level of change. You know, what is the act of support we give to people that have been subjected to any kind of violence? Do we have counselling in place? You know, what are the level incidents? What are the discussions that go on at trade union level? I would have hoped that, you know, we'll find a pretty clean picture, because I think, you know, as a council, we should be an excellent employee, but if we've got violence tucked away in it, then we need to know as councillors, because we need to make sure that it's addressed.
Thanks for the comments. Absolutely agree, and I think certainly speaking for officers in terms of the value of that question in terms of being very clear about the need to monitor and understand the scale of the situation. There has been very active conversations with trade union representatives as well. There's obviously regular engagement, and issues like this are raised fairly regularly. But if I can ask, perhaps just to offer an initial comment in response to your comments, Bailey Keenan, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks, Bailey Keenan, for the question. Happy for officers to provide the information you've requested around incidents, but also for me, key, the support that's being provided across the council, so we can arrange for that to be circulated to all elected members.
Thank you very much. Okay, Bailey McPherson next. Okay, uh, Bailey McPherson next.
I think it's councillor Lynn first, Convenor.
It is, uh, you are absolutely spot on, thank you, Bailey McPherson. Councillor Lynn, apologies.
Uh, thank you for that, Bailey McPherson, much appreciated. Um, I'd like to commend my, uh, colleague, Siobhan, for, for bringing this uh, to the council and asking for the Unison Charter to be accepted and formalized by, uh, this council. And, and it made me think of some of the, uh, jobs that I've had in the past, working with people who exhibited very challenging behaviours and being exposed to certainly the threat of violence many times and actual violence, not often, but, but it, it did happen. And thinking back to tho- tho- those days, I don't remember there was a great deal of, of support available, uh, thereafter for, for, for myself or indeed anyone else who'd been subjected to violence or the threat of it. And, um, as has been said, I'm sure this will be, uh, anonymous, uh, not anonymously, unanimously, uh, accepted tonight. And that, that's a good thing that this council, uh, has policies and procedures in place to provide the support to those who need it, thanks.
Thank you very much for your contribution, Bailey McPherson, back to you.
Uh, than- thanks, Convenor. Uh, simply to say that our group will be pleased to support the motion before us tonight and support, uh, Unison's Charter, uh, to end violence at work. I think we would all agree, violence of any kind in the workplace is completely unacceptable. And like councillor Lynn, I hope this will be unanimously accepted by committee tonight. Uh, thank you, Convenor.
Thank you very much, and councillor Short.
Just really to, um, establish that as our city council, we very much can be in the position to be leaders across the city. So if we accept this as a charter this evening, then hopefully it will be taken on board with partners such as, um, the Tate Roadbridge, Teesside Contracts, but our partners in NHS and across other different organisations, because we don't want to have just people within the council, but we want everyone in the city to have the same, uh, opportunities to work in a safe, balanced environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, bless you, councillor Cordell. Um, it's a very valuable point and I think on reflection, it might well be good to provide an update through the Dundee Partnership in particular as one mechanism, uh, for updating, uh, some of those partners on the approach that hopefully after this evening, we are taking unanimously so that that can be felt in every corner of the city through every one of those organisations, particularly the ones that we work very closely with, so thank you for that. Uh, Bailey Scott. Bailey Scott, can you use my?
Uh, sorry, happy to support this, Convenor, but I wouldn't like the message to go out that the council isn't already enacting all ten of these points in the charter, so perhaps the officers could confirm that we are already doing this and doing it well. And we, really, there's nothing on, on here that we're lacking in at the moment.
If you can pop your mic off, thank you very much. Um, in, in terms of officer contribution, I'll come to yourself in terms of the data.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you councillor, yes, we have been in contact with, uh, colleagues from Unison to go through the ten points on the charter. And we're assured that across our training policies and our procedures that we do meet it. What we need now is the communication around it to make sure that employees are extremely clear about how they are, the, how they have that, um, duty of care extended towards them and how they go about reporting any concerns and, and make sure that training and things is widely, um, known about as well. So that would include our frontline employees and we need to think, um, with our comms colleagues about a range of ways of making sure that that's really, really clear. So once we have that in place, we definitely be in a position to, to sign up.
Very much, apologies, because I said head of HR and it's of course Lindsay, head of people. So thank you very much for that contribution. Uh, I see no other questions or comments on this item, so can I take that as unanimously agreed? Thank you all very much, we'll move on to the next item, Willie.
Uh, thank you very much, item three, there is capital expenditure monitoring, this item is for noting.
I don't intend to go through the report in any great detail. You can see that there's been a number of variances since the last reported update to committee at the end of June. And I'm happy to take any questions from members, uh, councillor Crichton first.
Thank you, uh, Convenor. Um, I note that the projected outcome for general services for twenty four, twenty five is down by nearly fifteen million. And the housing HRA, um, is down by seven million. Um, given this, and now this is actually impacting the medium-term challenges, not just the short term with the capital programme for delivery, um, are officers confident, um, that the projected actual completion dates in the time it's two it can really be achieved, given the financial challenges?
That's very pertinent question, given recent announcements, particularly in terms of the Chancellor of the Exchequer setting out some of the, uh, financial challenges, as she says as well. Of course, these are questions that I myself have asked of officers to make sure that we are on track and we are able to deliver that programme. But happy to bring in Mr. Emma at this point to offer some, uh, insight and clarification.
Thank you, Convenor, thank you, councillor Crichton. It's squeaky. Um, we've done quite a substantial piece of work looking at the deliverability of programmes. So whilst there's an adjustment at this time, I'm quietly confident that we're now in a position where the general fund services will deliver the programmes. We tend to have an ambitious programme, which means that we're looking for funding for things and we're looking for projects to be taken forward. Um, but we've done, as I said, a detailed analysis to try and deliver that. There's, the greater challenge, um, probably around, um, housing projects are set out in the report. Um, and as it also indicates, we're doing some more work on what can be delivered in housing and how we can take forward the ambitions in that regard and that'll come back to members, um, at the committee in due course.
Thanks very much, happy with that, Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor.
Thanks very much for the question, uh, councillor Anderson next.
Thank you, Convenor, it's to do with point five two three about the delay, um, in electric vehicles. So it's saying here that the lead-in time is now twelve to eighteen months. I just wondered if we were expecting that to continue or is there any chance of that time scale reducing shortly?
Thanks very much for the question again, uh, another area that we did explore in a little bit of detail quite recently. Uh, I think the, the challenge, of course, is that it's not a local issue, it's one that is of national significance and given us some challenges. But if I can bring Mr. Emma in again.
So thank you, Convenor, you'll know that we're looking at, um, the fleet and the procurement of new vehicles and replacement vehicles as a key part of. Um, that, there's no signs at the moment that the supply of vehicles is increasing. I think it's to do with high-tech components and as you say, it's a worldwide, um, problem. So if there's any update on that, we can include that in, in future reports.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see no other questions on this item, can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much, we'll move on, Willie.
If, thank you, item four, there is revenue monitoring, again, this item is for noting.
Again, I think the report is self-explanatory. Clearly, the position we find ourselves in with the projected five million pound overspend is far from ideal. But of course, we have, uh, seen those variances caused as a result of, uh, several different factors which are outlined within the report. Uh, and officers will of course, uh, take, uh, a very proactive approach in terms of managing that in year. It's important to emphasise the point that it is projected, it is not necessarily where the position will end or crystallise. But we need to be very thoughtful about the financial situation that council finds itself in, notwithstanding a five million pound overspend and recognise that that is a particular challenge which, uh, officers will, uh, need to really focus on over the coming weeks and months and have been. Uh, it's fair to say over recent weeks and months as well. So I'll go straight to questions, uh, councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Gavina. The projected overspend at six point three in terms of unplanned and health and safety property repairs are significant at nearly one point four million. Given the property portfolio will be subject to regular monitoring, can officers please clarify exactly what these unplanned repairs covered? And why these were not part of the annual plan repairs as a result of that regular monitoring?
Thanks very much, uh, councillor Coleman, in terms of your question, I think it's a really important point. And obviously there'll be significant detail that sits behind this report that officers may be, uh, required to come back to you with rather than going through an itemised list at this point in time. But if I can bring in Mr. Emma in the first instance.
Thank you, Convenor, thank you councillor Coleman again. Um, so that's an estimate at this time and it's based on the expenditure that we've incurred in the last year and the works we expect to do in terms of maintaining our property in the year ahead. There is work actively going on, looking at how we can manage that. So obviously officers will be trying to manage that down over the course of the year. But the reality is we do have an extensive and aging estate. And whilst there's work going on, looking at modernising that, um, that's still work in progress, Convenor. So we'll continue to bring updates on that, um, as the monitoring reports come forward.
Thank you very much for that response. Uh, I see no other questions on this item. Of course, this will come back for a further update to the next round of committees. Um, and hopefully we will see those actions having a positive impact on the projected overspend position. Uh, can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much, we'll move on, Willie.
If, thanks, item five, there's Chief Executive Service, Service Plan Progress Report, this is for approval.
We've got a number of, uh, service plans, uh, before us this evening, of course, the Chief Executive Service Plan is the one that we're on at the moment. Uh, and it outlines a key set of, uh, priorities, as well as where the improvements and responsibilities for those service, uh, lie. It's really important to recognise, as we all very much know in terms of service delivery, that we are very aware of the challenging environment in which services are being delivered. But it's really positive also to point to the fact that fourteen out of the eighteen indicators in the plan have improved or maintained since the last progress report. We of course want to see eighteen out of eighteen, as officers do likewise. And it's really important that we continue to monitor the situation and seek those improvements across the board. So with that, I will just move to questions and comments, uh, councillor Duncan.
Uh, thanks, Convenor, I've got a question, um, centred around the table on the page fifty four. Uh, specifically the, the one dealing with the percentage of stage one complaints responded to within target. Uh, I've got some concerns really that both the short and the longer term trend is negative. I'm wondering if officers can elaborate on why this is and what steps are being put in place to rectify the situation.
Thanks very much, I'll bring in Andrea Calderon in the first instance, thank you.
Sorry about that, um, thank you very much for the question. Um, officers are looking at the details sitting behind the complaints in great detail. It was, um, discussed at the scrutiny committee. And there's an improvement action plan being developed to be further discussed, uh, the council leadership team and to put actions in place. We look in detail at each service and some of the services that have struggled to meet the deadlines have been children and families and health and social care, mainly because of the complexity of some of the complaints there, so they do take a bit longer, particularly if they come in just before the school holidays or peak holiday periods. So we've been having some work with children, families and health and social care on that. And as I said, the detailed improvement form is going to be looked at and we'll be doing some more targeted training across the council.
Thanks Andrea, that's really helpful, you happy with that, Craig?
Uh, that's, that's very helpful, Andrea. Uh, and I, I would just like to make a more general point, it's not to do with formal complaints, but certainly over recent months, uh, I've had a lots of, well, growing number of complaints from residents who simply just can't get through to the council, even about simple things, about bins and stuff like that. But I understand that those are not actually formal complaints, but maybe something to note.
Thanks very much for that point, Craig, I'm sure that will be noted, so appreciate your question there. Uh, as there's no other questions on this item, can I take the report as agreed, colleagues? Thank you very much, we'll move on to the next item, Willie.
If, thanks, item six, there's Children and Family Service Plan Progress Update, this, this is for approval.
Again, uh, I think it's really clear that we take these, uh, reports very seriously in terms of outlining both the priorities and monitoring the progress against those. Uh, service report before us, uh, obviously provides committee with the six-month update, uh, against the service plan for twenty three, uh, twenty seven, towards those key performance indicators. And as you'll see, uh, there is really good performance against a number, uh, some remain the same. And there is improvement required against a number of others as well. And it's recognising where we're both succeeding and where we're not succeeding in the way that we would intend, that we're going to continue to shine a spotlight on that and hopefully make progress. So happy to take any questions on this particular, uh, report, I will go to councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Gavina, and I think that might be the last time I address you as that, uh, John. Um, I was concerned to see that the percentage gap in attainment for school leavers, uh, living in S I M D one compared to those in five widening compared to the twenty one, twenty two baseline. Can officers please give assurances that the twenty twenty five target is indeed achievable? And what additional steps have been taken to achieve that?
Thanks very much for the question, Daniel. Obviously, through, uh, the service reports that come through, we've seen a number of action plans and reports that have itemised some of the proactive work that's been undertaken, uh, by officers and indeed, uh, teachers and support staff. But I'll, I'll bring in Miss May, uh, Audrey.
Uh, thank you, Convenor, and thank you for the question, yeah. Um, one of the things, um, that happens for our data is that we're kind of out of sync with the reporting cycles. So we're bringing the progress report on our service plan in the cycle with other services, but our data is just a wee bit behind. So you'll find in September, when we come along to, um, our children and families, um, service plans and updates, you'll see that the report there will show that there's improvement. This has been a targeted area for work for us in our own improvement plans, working in partnership with sick development colleagues and so on. So, um, the data for a number of our measures, as, as you pointed out, Convenor, is, are not, are not the, the most, uh, recent data. So we'll get the update in September, we'll get a further, uh, S Q A update at the end of September and we'll get an achievement of, uh, curriculum for excellence levels also in December. So we're just a wee bit behind the curve on that data cycle for attainment for the education part of our, our cycle.
Thank you very much for that response. And obviously with all of these reports, there is always that caveat in terms of reporting cycles and the nature of some of that information, because there is a variety of sources. It's fair to say that both children and family service have to report into, but also obtain information from. So thank you very much, uh, for that clarification. I think we'll all look forward, well, everyone else in this chamber will look forward to seeing that report come forward uh, with a more, uh, positive outlook in terms of the progress made. But thanks very much, councillor Coleman, for your question. Uh, are there any other questions on this item? Nope, can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much, we'll move on again to the next item, please, Willie.
Thank you, item seven, there's Neighbourhood Services Service Plan Annual Progress Report, you have to agree with the content of the report.
Again, uh, provides an overview against those objectives that have be- previously been set out for the service. Uh, and overall, since the commencement of the plan in June twenty twenty three, seventy three percent of actions are already noting fifty percent or more progress, which is positive. But of course, we want to continue to push that and see greater progress, uh, made. Uh, again, I think I speak for both elected members and officers in that regards. But, uh, worth highlighting a number of areas that are detailed within the report that are showing that positive trend. I'll go to, uh, comments and questions next, so I think, uh, councillor Crichton, you are first.
Thank you, uh, Convenor, and the figures on page eighty three relative to reactive repairs carried out within time scale are obviously really disappointing. And but I don't think it will surprise really anyone, uh, in this chamber. Um, I think all elected members, members welcome the service improvement plan to try and tackle this. And can I therefore ask officers, uh, to update committee on the progress of this plan, please?
Thanks very much, uh, for the question, um, councillor Crichton. Uh, obviously there'll be more detailed information that can come back via committee, uh, particularly through the, the housing committee in terms of updates on progress against that. But perhaps just invite, uh, Tony in the first instance to come in and perhaps I'll get there after, Tony?
Thanks very much, Convenor, thanks councillor for the question. Yeah, it's a, a very valid point, it's been made. We have detailed within the notes of the report, there is a service improvement plan which has been recently introduced for repairs and voids. And the service managers involved in housing construction are working to implement this, we're making progress over the last twelve weeks on this and looking to increase the resource to see a, a drop in jobs already in the system. And maybe ask, uh, Mrs. Equating to add a few words. Okay.
Uh, as Tony has outlined, we have been working since, um, taking the report up on the thirteenth of May, um, across construction and housing to take forward, um, improvements in service. Um, while we have still got, um, some work to do, we have already seen some progress and some key measures. So in terms of the year-to-date figure, um, for our performance on, um, emergency repairs, we are currently achieving, um, a, a performance of four point three, four hours to complete emergency repair, which compares to, um, four point five nine at the same time last year and is well within the target, um, that we have set out within the service plan. In terms of the percentage of reactive repair jobs carried out right first time, we're currently sitting at eighty one point four eight percent, which is up from seventy eight point eight three percent at year end. It's worth pointing out that there are two parts to this measure. One is the extent to which you complete repairs within the time scale identified. And the second is the extent to which there's a need to recall someone to do that pair again within a year. Um, and it's worth noting that our failure rate is actually very low at. And it's worth noting that our failure rate is actually very low at zero point four six percent. And we will provide, as Tony said, a more detailed report covering all categories of repairs at the end of the period. But obviously, updates are provided also to our committee. And that's just the flavour of where we are tonight in terms of response repairs.
Thank you very much for your response to that question. I think it's an area that obviously we're all very much focused on, but also acutely aware of some of the challenges. And it's good to see or hear of those improvements and obviously look forward to that report coming forward. Bailey McPherson next.
Thanks indeed, Convenor. Just alluding to, I should say, there's a lot of good information in this, this report, as indeed in the other service plans. With specific regard to the information on page ninety regarding street cleanliness score, our group has continually raised the issue of street cleanliness. And it's a little bit disappointing to see that the long-term street cleanliness score is still on a downward trajectory. And given that the narrative talks about the two hundred thousand additional revenue funding, well, that was done last year and the year before. And it really hasn't had the long-term impact, albeit everybody accepts that any additional resource, even short-term, is better than nothing. And we felt certainly that our cross-party working group was the way forward. That was knocked back and we will aim to bring that back in, you know, at the end of the six-month rule. However, I want to allude to, we've done a little bit of looking up what other local authorities do. Because I think, I think we all accept there are funding challenges, not just facing this particular area of the council's activity, but right across the board. But it doesn't, you don't have to look too far to see that there's a great deal of good practice out there indeed. In England, DEFRA has a code of practice for litter and refuse. And there's a lot of good practice and innovation out there. So I have a couple of questions, perhaps for Mr. Boyle or one of his colleagues. Firstly, I was just really wondering what is done in relation to ascertaining good practice, because I'm aware of the fact there'll be professional networks within environment management. And I would just really be very keen to learn a little bit more about that. Secondly, I thank Mr. Boyle for the email that he sent elected members about what's being spent in terms of this additional revenue this year. And I may be picked this up wrongly, but I thought I was told at a previous committee that there would be six community cleanups as a result of this. But there are only four in that email. Now, that might just be my over sixty memory, but perhaps Mr. Boyle could indicate to me if four is the total number or whether or not it's actually six. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. As you alluded to, it's an issue that affects almost, or actually, I think it is an issue that affects all local authorities, given the financial challenges. And of course, there has been a number of reports and a number of work scenes that have been brought forward in conjunction with external organisations. And I know that the convenor, particularly for biodiversity, climate and environment, has been very proactive in liaising and working with some of those national agencies to explore some of those innovations and models that you alluded to. So I think we've very much got that in mind when we're looking to maximise the impact of what is a fairly limited budget in this area. I'll ask Tony and Mr. Boyle to come in on the specific question that you raise and if there's any requirement for a follow-up. Of course, that can be done via email. Tony?
Thanks very much, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the question. Yeah, just to clarify on the first point, the code of practice litter and refuse actually applies in Scotland. Scotland has its own regulations in that regard, which are separate to England and Wales. And yes, we do make regular use of contact with other local authorities in terms of both benchmarking directly and also specifically trying to win best practice. I think that's what Billy McPherson was perhaps alluding to earlier on. So a lot of good work getting done there. And probably more specifically, the work we do directly keeps Scotland beautiful, who of course have got the benefit of overseeing, which every local authority in Scotland does, across the thirty-two authorities. So we please be reassured that we are doing that work and continue to strive to do more. Indeed, some of the issues and some of the points are intended for the narrative talk about some of the additional improvements we've made. And some of those improvements have come about through that discussion with other local authorities on best practice. And on the second point, Convenor, I remember and recall clearly advising Bailey McPherson it's four community cleanups per year. And I also share that issue of being perhaps not over sixty, but close to sixty. So I understand what it's like to rely on that memory, which is not always as good as it should be. Thanks, Convenor.
Thanks very much for that clarification. I
Could I perhaps briefly come back, Convenor? And I'll put it down to the recording that I picked up six, but rather than my over sixty memory. But I'm grateful for the clarification, Mr. Boyle. I would just say I'm also pleased that there is an equivalent, when you open the DEFRA document, code of practice on litter and refuse, it's all England only, England only, England only. So it's good to see that there is a equivalence in Scotland. And I'm grateful for the reassurance that professional networks are used to try to establish best practice and what can be actually done in Dundee. So very grateful to Mr. Boyle for his response. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. I'll come to Councillor Crichton next.
Thank you, Convenor. And I'd like to congratulate the executive director for this report. And lots of good information in it. There is a comment I want to make on the Dundee Low Emissions Scheme. I've had quite a few approaches from constituents in respect of the lives just after the Olympia Roundabout leading to the bus station, where many, many people drop off their elderly residents or people with disabilities. And now, you know, some of them have been hit with fines and others have, you know, tried to skirt around it. Was there any consideration at all in respect of the drop-off of the bus station prior to the lesbian introduced?
Mike off, Councillor Crichton. Thank you very much.
We've got another one after this.
Okay, I'll come back to you for your supplementary. I think just by way of a quick response, and then I'll perhaps ask officers to come in and offer their perspective. It's worth mentioning that, of course, there was an oversight group which was populated by representatives across Scotland. There was a national coordination group. There was a number of reports that came forward to Dundee City Council setting out the parameters for the scheme and how it would operate. And also the kind of guidance that would go along with that. We also delayed implementation and brought it in, I suppose, at the last possible moment under the national regulations. And there was a very proactive approach in terms of the communication of that. So I think to pull that all together, I think as much has been done as possible to communicate what the low emission zone would look like, how it would operate, the area in which it would occupy. When this specific is your question, I think I'll have to defer to officers. And I'm kind of, where is Tom? There he is. Mr. Sterling, if I can ask you to come in?
Thanks, Convenor. Yeah, I think as you've already said, there was extensive consultation in advance of the low emissions zone, including as well as studies that were conducted under the guidance, the National Low Emission Framework to arrive at the relatively small area of the city that is affected by, that is covered by a low emissions zone. And so I think, you know, that work included that the area that we have selected was the right one for the city. And that's not to say in future years that can be reviewed and amends. But I think for the time being, what we've arrived at is the correct area for the city.
I think the other thing perhaps just to note is if there are particular queries and complaints, it would be useful, I think, if you haven't already done so, I'm sure you have as well, to share them with Mr. Sterling, so they can be reflected through any conversations going forward. But you had a supplementary, Georgia, so I'll come back to you.
Yeah, just on page, that's true. Page eighty-five, in respect of the average number of days taken to re-let properties. Although it's still stubbornly high, and I know that coming out of Covid, we were a hundred and twenty-plus days to re-let, we're down to ninety-six oh five. So I'm looking forward to that number coming down. Given that we had approved the strategy for doing so. But I'm grateful for that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those comments, Georgia. If you can pop your mic off again. Thank you. I'm sure officers will take that on board. And actually, it's a really well-beaten point. I've been really heartened actually by the really proactive, honest, robust approach that officers and neighbourhood services have taken to the challenges that we know that we're facing. And I think credit is due, you know, not taken away from the challenges, but there is a real effort they are going in to try and make that, you know, or to get that in a position where it is significantly reduced. And hopefully, throughout these kind of update reports, what we'll see is that continued decline in the number of days to re-let a property. So thank you very much for those comments. I'll come to Councillor McHugh next.
Thank you. Similar question, certainly on the same topic. And the performance indicators in this report, I'm wondering how these indicators are chosen. Do they reflect our local priorities or are they standardized to national indicators? And my attention is drawn to this because of the data on voids in the report. The update tells us that it takes ninety-six days to re-let properties and that two point one six percent of rent due is lost through empty properties. It doesn't tell us, though, how many properties are void and show the trend over time. Why is there no indicator on this important information?
Thanks, Councillor McHugh. If you can pop your mic off for a moment. Thank you very much. It's a really important question. I think it's worth noting that there are a number of different reports that come back through committee services that details, offers more granular detail in terms of a direct breakdown of some of those stats and figures. And you will see that reported through the housing committee itself. This is obviously taken as a six-month update report on the service plan, but there will be very specific plans within that which will relate to the issues that you rightly raise in your question. But perhaps come to Tony and Olga for their insights. Tony?
Thanks again, Convenor. Thanks, Councillor, for the question. The first part of the question, I think, was about whether these are national or local indicators. And the answer is a combination of both. If some of them are statutory, some of them are local, that we have developed and they come from a, what is a five-year plan. So we do our best, as the convenor outlined, to present a summary to members through these six monthly updates that give a snapshot of where we are generally in performance. And we do follow that up with specific reports to specific committees. I'm going to ask Mrs. Eclatton to comment on the specific issue around the question about voids. But I would say that we can't put all the detail about every specific issue that's in these tables to the members in this summary report. Olga?
Thank you. To follow up on what Tony's just said, we are obliged as a part of our regulatory framework, which is overseen by the Scottish Housing Regulator, to report on certain performance indicators. This is to allow tenants to compare the performance of their landlord with that of other landlords, whether they are housing associations or councils right across Scotland. And we then carry out an annual report to tenants which shows our performance against these national standards and gives them benchmarking information. And that's part of the tenant charter approach at a national level. We do, of course, also have the ability to add in contextual information, which would be the number of voided properties. And that's certainly something that could be considered going forward. It's important to note that as we move forward with allocating properties, which have been in the backlog, some for up to two years, our average days to let will actually increase. And the reason for that is that it's calculated as an average. So as soon as we put in a property from the pool, which has been empty for a long period of time, that average stretches out. It seems counterintuitive, but it's actually good news in the short term if the average days to let go up. In the longer term, we should get back to a situation where all properties are being let within a relatively short period of time. I'm happy to take any further questions.
Thank you very much for those contributions and helpful in terms of that clarity as well. And we've got a couple of further contributions. So Bailey Scott, you're next on my list.
Convenor, I was just looking for some information, but that came in a response to an earlier question. I just didn't know how to take my question out of the chat.
Thank you very much, Bailey Scott. That's appreciated. And I think the final contribution on this item is Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Convenor. I just wanted to say some very positive things about this report. And really, forty-one percent of Dundee is green accessible space. So the huge amount of maintenance and management of that space. I just wanted to thank hundreds of volunteers and our friends groups, our community growing groups and our communities who support us to continue to achieve seven green flag awards. And we're working towards an eighth green flag award. Bonnie Dundee won the city category yet again. And Dundee is astoundingly brilliantly representing the whole of Scotland in the RHS Britain and Bloom UK finals this year, which is quite amazing. But they picked Dundee as a city to represent the whole of Scotland in those finals. So just wanted to give a shout out for how well all those people have done. I just wanted to also add that we also managed to spend over seven hundred thousand pounds through participatory budgeting in our climate fund, supporting eighteen projects across the city. And to reassure people that Mr. Boyle and myself have lots and lots of conversations about bins. And I think of the three point two million collections in the last six months, we've got over ninety-nine percent of them right. So just to congratulate the team and Mr. Boyle, who's doing his new job and his old job so well.
Very much, Councillor Anderson. I think we'd all certainly share that warm welcome on those specific stats. And of course, a hundred percent is always better, but ninety-nine percent is certainly something to give credit for. And we know how hard officers work to ensure that we are trying our utmost to deliver the services that we all aspire for. So thank you very much for that. There are no other contributions on this item. So can I take this as agreed, please, colleagues? Thank you very much. We shall move on. Willie?
Thank you very much. Item A then, before we use the scrutiny committee annual report, this is items for looking.
This is the scrutiny of the scrutiny committee. I don't think there are any particular questions or comments that I need to offer from the chair, but I'll open up to comments. So Bailey McPherson.
I'd just be very brief, Convenor, but I think given that the chief internal auditor had proposed bringing this forward as an annual report, given SIFRA guidance. And I just didn't want it to just slip past without a comment. And my comment really is around my grateful thanks, and I'm sure I speak for all eight members of the scrutiny committee, in saying a great thanks to officers, and that's not just council officers, but it's also external officers such as fire and rescue service, police and so on, who come to scrutiny committee where there is some very detailed questioning and they come very prepared. And I think we appreciate that. In fact, because the scrutiny committee only works if we're able to get into that scrutiny. So a very grateful thanks to all the officers who participate in scrutiny committee. It's appreciated. The one other thing I was just going to briefly say is, I think when people hear scrutiny, they think, oh, you're scrutinising what's gone wrong. But a lot of the time, actually, it's what's gone right. And we've seen some excellent care and spectre in Education Scotland's reports recently, including a swathe of school inspection reports just before the recess, which were nothing short of exemplary. And it was good to have some of the head teachers along, just really to thank them and their teams for the hard work that's going on. So I just really wanted to just place on record my thanks to officers for the significant efforts they put into making the scrutiny committee the success it has become. Thank you, Convenor.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. Certainly align myself with those comments. Of course, we know how at the core of everything that we do, that scrutiny is, and the scrutiny committee has a very important function. And I would also like to add my thanks to the members of the scrutiny committee, who, as you say, look over these reports and ensure there is that additional element of scrutiny in the council processes. So thank you for those comments. Bailey, can you?
Same for you. I wasn't intending coming in. I was just looking for people to look through that report and make their own comments and make their own conclusions. I would have to say that, you know, the questionnaire that we received, you know, I think people answered it very thoroughly. And there is probably things that we need to change as we move forward in scrutiny. Because the first question that was asked by the SIFRA was someone that you just had to say no to. someone that you just had to say no to. That's not how we do things here. So, you know, if we need to change it to have that tick box exercise different, as Bailey McPherson says, it was no about delving into everything that's went wrong. We've had many of these long sessions in the recent Olympia or whatever. But there is certainly the ones like in education that we just had recently where all the sort of early years were just superb. And it's good to see that that kind of start in life is hopefully setting kids up for their future. So I'll leave the comments to that.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. If you can pop your mic off. Again, I echo those comments wholeheartedly. I think it's really important that we do celebrate those successes. And we know we've got thousands of members of Dundee City Council staff and partner organisations who absolutely work their backsides off to deliver those services that are ultimately saving lives, supporting people, both in their most challenging circumstances, but also as they grow up in the city as well. And it's worth putting our thanks continually on the record in that regard. So thank you very much for those contributions. I see nobody else. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Move on to the next item. Willie?
Thank you. That takes you on to item nine, reducing harm from drug and alcohol use. It's an update report which is for noting.
It's a really important report. And of course, as we all know all too well, the work of the Dundee Alpha Hall and Drug Partnership recognises that poverty, deprivation, the range of trauma and adverse serial impacts that present across the city contribute to high levels of drug and alcohol related harm in Dundee. I think as a city, we're always really honest about that. We are also really robust in the approach that we take in working across organisations, working across services to try and have maximum positive impact in any way that we can. And ultimately to save lives and to protect people. Members are asked to know the content of the report, which provides a summary overview of progress made during the first year of the ADP strategic framework for 2023 to 2028, and the key priorities for the second year of delivery. The implementation of the National Medication Assisted Treatment, otherwise known as the MAT standards, has been a key aspect of the work across all ADPs in Scotland during 2324. The National 2824 Benchmark Report, published in July, demonstrated considerable progress made against those MAT standards in Dundee. And I want to again pay tribute to the members of the team that are working in every single one of our communities on a daily basis to ensure that we are delivering as much as we possibly can the highest and most beneficial services to mitigate, to protect and to save lives of those directly affected by the harm caused by alcohol and drugs. But of course, also indirectly, we know the trauma that that causes across our communities. Other significant developments worth noting, of course, are the establishment of Dundee's recovery network, really important. And again, also important, the opening of Hope Point, which across this chamber has been something that we have all championed and supported. That joint approach to substance and mental health is absolutely at the core. And we're all motivated to do more on that subject. I would also like to welcome Pam Durek, who is the independent chair of the ADP, the new independent chair, and of course, other members of the team who are here today, including Farid and Jenny as well, who I'm sure would be happy to take any questions or comments. Let me go back to where I, Kevin, did you get in first on this one? Go for it then. Bailey Keenan, over to you.
Okay, thank you. Unusual for me. Your first finger must be getting faster. I welcome the improvements that we've got within the MAT standard and, you know, as credit to the individuals that work there. Myself and councillor Lynn were members of the original sort of drugs commission that was established in Dundee. And, you know, I think it's came a long way from there. And, you know, for a time, I was concerned about the amount of government money that was coming in, that was like initiative overload, and thought that to be extremely bad for the workforce. Because it obviously meant that somebody's always looking over their shoulder for, what's the new project? Where should I be working now? I may not be doing enough where I am. And, you know, I think that that level of initiative overload looks to have dropped out as we've looked and people have came forward for service and that MAT standard driving things forward. However, I'd make a plea to the sort of chief officers group that as I go around the city and I hear from others that, you know, just that last week someone mentioned to me, the shop across the road, it was somebody under influence of drugs went and helped her sell a load of stuff, came out in the street trying to sell it, and then ended up with a fight in the middle of the street, shouting and screaming at each other. And it was one of the cleansing department people that stopped the fight. You know, and that builds alarm to everyone else. And it suggested to me that there's a range of people that haven't accessed the support that's there to help them with any kind of drug issues that they've got, potentially awards getting off them. And you know, and if I suppose if you just continue and everything tells you, you need a bit more for that hit, then the next death statistic. So I think it's something that the chief officers group within the city, right across the partnership, needs to get its head around trying to do something. Because, you know, the crisis in another area would just go worse. Thanks for that.
Thanks for those comments, Bailey Keenan. I think we're all acutely aware of the challenges in that regard. And as I alluded to in my comments, the impact isn't just the direct impact, it's the indirect impact, as you describe in terms of our communities. It's a really complex, multifaceted issue. We know the nature of that in terms of what that does to a person, or sometimes the chaotic nature of their lives can have a broader impact as well. And I think that's why certainly through the ADP and the partner organisations, that has been that really proactive but diverse approach. So it's not merely looking at one particular aspect of drug and alcohol addiction, but looking at mental health, looking at childhood trauma, and looking at a number of different interventions, including at a local level, the money that was devolved to each of our community areas to look at recovery cafes and that type of initiative to really get something in, in terms of the support at a very local level. So I think your point's well made. Again, I'll perhaps bring in the chief executive as chair to offer his insight as well. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Convena, and thanks Bailey Keenan for the question. Just to give you the assurance that the ADP, along with the COG, is looking at prevention. Good examples of that are the joined up working that we're seeing across the partnership, but also the continued expansion of Planet Youth. So I'm happy to take the points you've raised today and get them to come back to the COG. So the partnership continue to look at what more we can do to support some of the most vulnerable people within the city.
Thank you very much. Councillor Skellm?
I've just got a question on the point at the bottom of page 106. It says Dundee's experiencing a small but potentially growing number of longer weeks, all of which have been individuals presenting to alcohol services. So I wondered if this was a service issue or if more people are coming forward.
Thank you very much for the question. I'll defer to Jenny in the first instance.
I think we have problems with our buttons. That's better. We do have a high demand for people experiencing alcohol issues. And what we're doing at the moment is we've just recently appointed somebody to review that pathway to look at that and streamline that.
Thanks very much. Happy that. Wendy?
So is it a service issue then, or is it more people coming in? Is there any indication at all of what's causing the problems?
If I can just add, so it is a combination of the way the waiting times are being measured nationally, and we have a slight issue when it comes to alcohol, because alcohol services work slightly differently. And in addition to that, there is an issue that since Covid, we are having a lot more people presenting to alcohol services. And our main service, which is Tayside Cancer and Alcohol, in addition to DEDAS, is, it's not a huge service and it does need boosting. So we are looking, as Jenny said, at the pathway and how we can support that.
Yes, thank you for those contributions. Councillor Finnigan?
Hi. I'm reassured by the support of the improvements having been on the ADP for the last two years. I suppose at the start, I was very frustrated that all the focus went towards the MAT standards. And that seemed to be the whole aim of the service. Whereas the people around the table didn't actually want it like that. The Tayside Cancer and Alcohol and the other professionals were trying to get the partnership to do more with alcohol. So I'm glad to see that that is the plan moving forward. There's more on that. I think what I had seen is the government funding at the start was ring fenced. And it was almost like, in layman's terms, it was like, here's £50, but you must buy a pair of shoes by Tuesday. But what you need is a jumper. If you've not got the shoes, we'll have the money back. And I think there was a bit of frustration regarding how things were funded. I don't think the funding, it was identified at the grassroots to where it was needed. It was almost, here's the money you've got, and that's what you could do with it. So a lot of time, I think it was being spent, and obviously deciding that. A lot of good work. I do have some questions though, if that's okay. I know the frontline workers, especially from the NHS, were experiencing a lot of kind of negative feedback from press and from, from just generally the public, and they felt as though they weren't doing enough. I suppose it's one of these jobs when you're trying to engage with people with chaotic lifestyles, the job satisfaction might be a bit low. So it was just to thank everybody that's involved in that for their continuous involvement. And every one person that's life could be improved from drugs, whether it's alcohol, whether it's the person that's taking it or their family around them, it's not gone unnoticed. So I've got a couple of questions. One of them was about during 202324, 18 people access residential rehab establishments. Almost all people embarking on the residential support completed their full treatment. I'm wondering what almost all people, how many from the 18 completed their full treatment? How long was the treatment? Where did they go for it? And what services did they receive? And also, no, that's okay.
Okay, no worries. I will bring in Jenny and Barry to offer some insight into that.
We don't have the answer to that, but we'll get that to you. And the go to range of different resources in different places according to the type of treatment that benefits them and what their preferences are. So most of them are out of area. And there's different models. It's a pathway that's run by We Are With You for us.
Thanks very much for that. And we'll follow up with some more detail to elected members as well. I think the point you raised is a really important one though, in terms of the nature of the work that's ongoing. We can't underplay the issue, but it's also important to recognise progress where it has been made. And I think there can be no doubts, both from this report and previous reports, that this is something that the city, all of the partners have taken incredibly seriously. And there has been progress made. But we know there's far more that we need to do in terms of making greater progress against these issues. So thank you very much for your question. Make sure that's followed up on after the meeting. Councillor Duncan next.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. Just quickly before I ask my question, just to point out that myself and others recently had the opportunity to attend online briefings about these subjects. And I actually recognise Pam there, for example. And just to say really that how useful these briefings actually are, you know, and I do appreciate how difficult it must be to get all these very busy officers all assembled at the same time to, you know, pass on progress reports and such like. So just to say that, you know, I do appreciate it. And there's a lot, I think what came out of the briefing was that there's a lot of really good progress being made in what is obviously a very difficult subject area. And that brings me really away to my question about, it's around the financials shown at 3.2 on page 103, about the funding that's been made available, some 2.4 million from the Scottish government for 2024 to 25. And there might not be an answer tonight, but what I'm trying to get at is it would be a shame if any of the welcome and hard one progress was in any way jeopardised by lack of funding going forwards. And I just wondered what officers can perhaps enlighten us as to the certainty of funding or otherwise going forward.
Thank you very much for the question, councillor Duncan. I think you're right. It's an important aspect, as in all of the work that is undertaken, of course, but financial support is absolutely integral in terms of the approach that we take going forward. I think it's fair to say as well, and I'm sure I speak for councillors across the chamber, which is when I say that we are very proactive in seeking that funding, particularly on issues like this. And we'll certainly continue that approach. I'm certain whether or not I'm in this chamber, but I'll perhaps come to Mr Berry in the first instance, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. So in terms of the finances for the ADP, so this year we are more or less guaranteed what we expect to get for 2425. And I think the issue has been highlighted in the report as well, is that a lot of this funding is short term, is kind of year to year basis as well. So in terms of the ADP, it has a commissioning plan as well, and a financial framework wrapped around that and to support that work. We are continually looking at the priorities that set within the delivery plan to make sure that the financial investments aligned with that. But we cannot guarantee past the end of this financial year, what that financial envelope that we're working within is going to look like. So we know that there are funding streams that are due to end at the end of this year and next year. And we'll continue to work with government and colleagues around the impact of that, if that funding has been drawn.
Thank you very much for that. And thank you for the question, councillor Duncan.
Can I just come back?
Yeah.
Just really, I think I probably would speak for most people would say that, you know, short termism could potentially be the undoing of all these good works. And it's really just a point which I'm sure we would all probably echo, that, you know, the more certainty as regards to the long term, the better for all those involved in this area.
I think I will heartily agree with those comments. And it's certainly something that I think we've consistently spoke to, the need for both UK and Scottish government to provide longer term planning assumptions so that we can work towards those. Obviously the recent announcement in terms of UK government and the £20 billion black hole doesn't help in terms of that focus on improvement and delivering these services. But we will be proactive, I'm sure, in continuing to push for that outcome. So thank you very much for that contribution. Councillor Lynn, you're next.
Thank you, Convena. I think it's really appropriate that this item is on the agenda tonight, near the end of the agenda for your final committee, as convenor of this committee and indeed as leader of the council, because we've already heard the Drugs Commission mentioned tonight. And the Drugs Commission really goes back to a conversation that you and I had prior to the start of the 2017 to 2022 council session, where, you know, we both expressed our real concerns about the level of drug deaths in the city and what could be done about it. And from that came the Drugs Commission. And I noticed, I think it may have been in one of the interviews you've given since you announced the fact that you were going to leave the council, that you'd mentioned the work that's been done in relation to trying to help people with serious problems with drugs and alcohol. You've counted that as among the most important work that you've done as council leader. And I certainly agree with that. The, where we are now is a much improved position from where we were in 2017. And the last three years, for example, we've seen a year on year improvement in how services are delivered in terms of achieving the MAT standards. And now we are, I believe, second or third in Scotland in terms of the quality of those services that we provide. The only downside, I think, of the Drugs Commission was that it put, I think, as has been mentioned by another, it put services aren't very much under the spotlight. And I think morale suffered. In fact, I know morale suffered as a result of that. But let's just look at where we are now and the position with regard to recruitment and retention. But let's just look at where we are now and the position with regard to recruitment and retention of staff is really, we're in a really good place at the moment. Because people are enjoying the work that they're doing, the challenge that they're faced with and the improvements that have been made to the lives of Dundonians. So, yeah, really pleased about that. And as I say, glad that it's close to the end of the agenda in your final meeting because a lot of the work that's been done is down to your encouragement, John. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Councillor Lynn. And I think it's fair to say that all of these issues, and we know how incredibly important they are. We love them, we breathe them, we genuinely care. And I think that comes through when we're talking about subjects like this, but it is a collective city effort. And I think that needs to be recognised in terms of both the contribution, the challenge that has come from council, from other partners and within services itself, and the advocacy of those that need that help, their families, the individuals that are affected. And again, pay absolute credit to yourself, the broader council and of course, all of the organisations involved with the ADP and staff. So thank you very much for those comments. Councillor Short, I think you're the last one on my list.
Thank you. I like follow that, Ken. Thanks very much. And in my case, it's actually to say thank you to the third sector who support as well. And they are very much a huge part of the equation. And I was very fortunate last week to go to her first birthday party. And I'm pleased to say that I was there at the very beginnings when there was a germination of an idea. And with the Scottish Recovery Consortium, DBBA, and with the help of North Lancashire Recovery Community, we were able to bring a recovery cafe to the city through the Dundee Recovery Network. And what an occasion it was last week. Fortunately, I missed the boxer size, but I did make it for the quiz. And let's just say music is not my gift. However, to see the camaraderie and the support across everybody who was there and the guys at Northlance had come over and they had the sort of, the beautiful model for everybody to follow. And they've been a wee bit jealous of what we've got in the city now. So hats off to the fact that that group are supporting each other. And I also think it's really important to focus on the fact that one of the people who were there, they were going to be staying on later because attending for the recovery cafe has led to them supporting the food larder. So something that they would never have previously done. So as well as supporting their peers and supporting each other, supporting the wider community, which is, I think, something that should be very much applauded. And it may sound a little bit cringey, but with all the big headlines, I would love to see the point where we become the European capital of recovery. And we can raise that as a standard as to what we actually are. Because if we have that support continuing, we can get there. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you very much for those comments. And absolutely, that has to be the aspiration because we know literally people's lives depend on it. And I know that a number of elected members attended the first birthday of Hope Point as well. And it was a great example of the city coming together to look at how they support people, particularly with reference to mental health issues, which we know is a really important issue across our communities as well. So thank you very much for that. I see no other contributions on this item. I do want to just give an opportunity and apologies in advance, Pam, after putting you on the spot. But as the new independent chair, you've heard some of the perspectives from elected members here and that very clear, I think, vote of thanks in terms of what's been delivered. But Pam, as the new independent chair, is there anything you would like to say before I bring the item to a conclusion?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of words. I think the position that I've joined and the team that I've joined is just fantastic. And it's a joy to come in and a privilege to be given this opportunity. I think, you know, listening to some of the comments that have been made and the importance of community and helping those communities thrive and being responsive in the shape and design of our services is absolutely critical, whether that be drugs or alcohol or, and in particular, some of the non opiate pathways that are now emerging. I think there's still lots to do, but some of the foundations are really, really secure and positive. And ultimately, I guess what we'll be looking for is what does all that translate to? Will we start to see that in our outcomes, improvements in our outcomes? And, you know, some of the examples there of concern that have been raised, you know, the translation of all these actions, we would hope to see that in the outcomes that we see across the city. But absolute privilege to be put in this position. I'm delighted to be here.
Thank you very much. And we all wish you incredibly well as the new independent chair of the ADP as well. And look forward to hopefully that continued positive journey. So thanks for those comments and I will take this item as agreed. Thank you very much. We'll move on, Willie.
Yeah, thank you. It takes us to item ten and to the audit report, Leisure and Culture Dundee Financial Sustainability. Yes, it will be the content of the report.
Thank you very much. Note the suggestion or the comment that's just been made by Councillor Dawson, Bailey Dawson. Thank you very much for that. The internal audit report on leisure culture Dundee was considered by the scrutiny committee, as was detailed within the report itself. And this was obviously referred to city governance for review by all elected members. And I think we're all equally clear on both what is set out within the context of this report, the challenges, but also the scale of the opportunity. And I think we all incredibly value leisure and culture Dundee. I know I've had numerous conversations with the director Judy about the fantastic range of services that leisure and culture provide, but also the realities in terms of the post Covid decline in visitor numbers, with a twenty eight percent lower than pre pandemic level number of attendees at many of these facilities. I think it's also important to recognise that there is proactive work ongoing. And I know from meeting with various members of Judy's team and Judy herself, that there is a real appetite to look at how we secure the future of leisure and culture in the long term. Of course, the council has provided more than four million pounds of additional support over recent years to ensure that those services continue to be provided. But as we've already mentioned and has been alluded to, both UK government level in terms of the twenty billion pound black hole that was set out by Rachel Reeves and of course, more recent announcements by Scottish Government in terms of the constraints on funding. The challenges are real, they are live and we need to be very mindful of that to ensure that we can continue to provide the range of services that we all want to see. So with all that said, I'm happy to move to questions and comments. I know that, I think there's no, sorry, there is. Bailey McPherson has a question first, so I'll come to that.
Thanks, Kevina. You alluded to the reduction in attendance of facilities in relation to pre pandemic levels. That figure of twenty eight percent that you quoted was actually in the annual performance and impact report that came to committee back in February. And I was, if we're looking at the medium term to long term financial sustainability of leisure and culture Dundee, I think we would all agree that seeing increased attendance back to the sort of levels we had pre pandemic is absolutely vital. And given that that figure was back in February and we're now, you know, towards the end of August. I was just really wondering, I don't know if Mrs Dobby is on the meeting, I assume so. But I was wondering if she or a colleague could indicate where attendance levels have gone in the last few months? Are they heading in a positive direction, basically? Thank you, Kevina.
Thank you very much, Fraser. You'll be pleased to hear that she is here in person. So Judy, I'll pass it over to yourself.
Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. The attendance figures for this first quarter, April to June, are showing a gradual increase across most areas. So, for example, libraries, pre Covid were sitting between eighty three to eighty nine thousand a month in the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. And the first quarter of this year, they're sitting round about sixty two to seventy five thousand a month. So we are looking across services at a slow increase.
Okay, grateful for that, Mrs Dobby. And it would be useful, I would say, if, you know, some of the information, because obviously you're giving an example of libraries, it's a positive direction, it's got a little ways to go. I think we would all agree in relation to the pre Covid situation. But any information that could be perhaps shared with the committee with regard to quarter one, twenty twenty four, twenty five by email at a later stage would be very much appreciated. Because I think we all want to see an increased attendance of all the leisure and culture Dundee facilities. And it would be good to get that reassurance. But I'm grateful to Mrs Dobby for her reply. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Fraser. And Judy has nodded to indicate that she will follow up in terms of that information as well. So thank you very much for the question and for the response, Judy. So I'll come to Bailey Keenan. Got an amendment?
Yes, I do have an amendment and I'd be for it to be circulated. I suppose when this came to scrutiny, we were reading in the press that it was the intention to go out to consultation about closing Kirk Park Golf Course, the Mills Observatory, Brophy Ferry Castle as a museum. Not sure if there was other things in among that consultation as well. But, you know, I think that leisure and culture is an area that we've let down as a council and we've let somewhat wither on the vine. You'll recall that on a number of occasions, Labour put forward proposals to increase footfall by stirring money around pots at various budgets. Obviously, these were rejected by the administration. And here we are with another recommendations for a sort of deeper dive into leisure and culture. When I asked it to come up back to committee, because it was thought it was really important that everybody, given that we've supported the Covid funds going in the direction of leisure and culture with the intention to see the numbers increase and it back to some level of health, then, you know, well, everybody was prepared to support that. I think we should have went a bit further and we should have had reports coming back from leisure officers that suggests how they would spend, how they would bring footfall into the organisation. And when I made the recommendation for it to come up from the scrutiny committee, I thought the agreement was that there would be that level of review work from leisure and culture and a report coming back from them about spends to save and other initiatives that would see them back to some level of health rather than what this looks on the face of it. Just another, how can we make the cuts? Be some kind of level of blessing. So I'm asking that you endorse the motion that I've put forward and bring forward that report, looking for leisure and culture officers to work with others to make sure that there is some level of offering made to us about how we would improve the footfall and the financial stability of leisure and culture.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. I'll respond in a moment. I'll allow Councillor Shears to second and then I'll seek a response from the chief executive on a particular aspect of this. So Pete, over to you.
Thanks very much, Kevina. And I'll not say too much because Kevin's kind of summed up everything that we wanted to say there. But I think it's really important to note that if something doesn't change, we are going to be in the cycle of every February, there's a chance that beloved institutions across Dundee might have to close to save money. Now, none of our groups want to be in that position. No one would take any pleasure from doing that. But realistically, that's the situation we are looking at unless we can get something to change. And for me, the biggest way to get changed, to get leisure and culture back to where it was, is to get feet through doors. It's the number one thing we can do. So all this amendment is asking is that we get some ideas on the table. How can we do that? How can we spend to save? And I don't think it's asking for too much and I hope that you will accept it, Kevina.
Thank you for that. I'm going to offer a quick comment and then I'm going to ask the chief executive to come in on a point of clarification. My quick response, I suppose, is firstly, that I think you failed to recognise or read the consultation document because it is not a consultation on closure. Quite the opposite, it is a consultation to avoid closure. And it sets out in great detail the various aspects or the various work streams that would be undertaken to ensure that that didn't happen, including looking at sponsorship, external support, private sector engagement, and also looking at the current model of delivery for those services. The very last thing on that list, if we had exhausted everything and nothing had changed, the point that you're making, obviously, we would have to consult on closure. That was never the intended outcome that we would want to see. And I was very clear in that, as was every other member of my group. I would also say, and I would say that it would be recognised, I've been very proactive on this front in engaging in the way that I've just set out to seek support, to endeavour for a better outcome for these three particular areas. And just one to mention, of course, the beloved Mills Observatory, where I very quickly managed to secure a five year commitment, fifty thousand pounds, and there is more that has been committed, perhaps not in hard cash, but certainly for the commitment to look at how we enhance and support that with working with other agencies and organisations. So I will not take any lectures about the approach that we've taken. We have absolutely been incredibly thoughtful about the city needs, the challenges that we have. And we are trying to proactively do something about that, just to be absolutely clear. My point, the clarification for the chief executive is in relation to the amendment set out there. Obviously, in terms of the report itself, it sets out that there would be that review to understand what the complexities are, the challenges, the opportunities and to look at all of those kinds of issues. Now, very conscious of the role and the independence of leisure and culture registered with Oscar. So my question to the chief executive is, is that part or incorporated in many ways into the body of work that you would envisage alongside the director for leisure and culture Dundee that's already outlined in the report?
Thanks, conveners. So in response to Bailey Keenan's amendment, just to confirm, recommendations two point one two, and part of that would include working with leisure and culture Dundee and looking at any future investment proposals. So that could include spend to save. But they would be done in partnership with leisure and culture Dundee and they would be reported back when I bring the review back to committee. So looking at further income opportunities, looking at how we can work with leisure and culture Dundee to increase the footfall and how leisure and culture Dundee continues to deliver on the council and city plans will all be part of the review. So my intention is that that would come back as one report. And the spend to save or investment or additional ways in which leisure and culture Dundee may want to operate would be done in partnership with the council. But it would take into account and give clear recommendations around the fiscal constraints that we're operating in and any risk associated so that elected members are looking at a balanced report. So the spend to save and ways to increase footfall will be part of the external review, subject to agreement tonight, that will be commissioned in partnership with leisure and culture Dundee and the council.
Thank you for that clarification. I think on that basis, obviously, the intention behind the amendment is one that I agree with. What you've just heard there is it's actually incorporated in that recommendation. So on that basis, it gives both members the reassurance you've got. It's recorded, it is contained already within the recommendations set out in the report. Are you happy with that, Bailey Keenan?
Happy to accept the commitment that's been given by the chief executive.
Thank you very much. So just to clarify, you're happy to withdraw your amendment on the basis that it's there already?
I think you incorporate it, so you agree, you incorporate it. So if that's the case, then I agree with it.
Yep, hundred percent. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you very much. And on that basis, I see no other contributions. So can I take this item as agreed, please? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, please, Willie.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven, then, before he's, three six five, back up his security report, we'd ask you the recommendations.
And self explanatory, I think. Any questions on this particular item? See, nobody seeking to make a contribution, so can I take this item as agreed?
Thank you very much. Just before we end committee formally, as the Lord Provost outlined, I just wanted to give, I suppose, my last contribution in this chamber. And you are all by this point well aware of my recent announcement of my early retirement from politics. And I wanted to just say, or make a few comments before I leave this chamber for the last time. And I, of course, was elected to Dundee City Council at the ripe old age of twenty three, which was not necessarily the original plan I might have envisaged for myself at that point. But it has been an incredible journey over those twelve years from what many would refer to in my initial stages as a politician, as the lad from the trotting shops to leader of the council, has certainly been some journey. And during my tenure, I've had the opportunity to work with an incredible array of individuals, of businesses and community groups. Also held a variety of roles, all giving me, I think, a really useful perspective on the realities in which our citizens face day in, day out. And I never assumed that I ever knew better. I always sought to throw myself in and I'm sure many members can attest to that. And all of the roles that I've had, I have put my heart and soul into them. From also as, you know, convenor of neighbourhood services, working also as, you know, convenor of neighbourhood services, working a shift on the bins to more recently working within some of our community larders or with other agencies to get a really truthful insight into the challenges that people face, not merely sitting in what is sometimes termed my ivory tower and pretending I knew what was going on. And I think that is what has kept me grounded. That has always been my motivation. And I am proud of, hopefully, the limited contribution I've made, but in conjunction with all political representatives, the contribution that we've made. It's fair to say, and I'm holding it together quite well, because when I told my group I was an emotional wreck, because I do genuinely care. And it hasn't been helped, in actual fact, by the incredible lovely messages that I've received from individuals, from officers, from elected members, from charities, from members of the Fairness Commission, from businesses. And I did have to go home after my announcement and tell my wife to be horrible to me, to keep me on an even keel. My passion for the work of the council and the city generally is not diminished by my decision. And my decision should be seen as nothing else than a relatively young man taking an opportunity to focus on matters closer to home. And my family have been intertwined with my roles. And I've been engaged, got married, had my two children, all during my tenure on Dundee City Council. I'm sure that's true of others. And whilst my time is coming to an end, yours continues and I absolutely wish you all the very best in that regard. Turning to a couple of individuals' groups, I suppose, I want to just first of all say to my colleagues, the SNP group, how much I valued their challenge, their support. And we are a family, a very dysfunctional family, as I'm sure is true of every other group on this council. And actually, all 29 of us are very much a dysfunctional family in many ways. I hold you all in such high regard, you will never know. And I really value your friendship and your support during my entire 12 years, not just the last seven as leader of the council. And to opposition colleagues, I think on the whole, over certainly 12 years, I have found you all to be incredibly honest, robust. Sometimes I've been lectured and challenged and sometimes it was required. And sometimes I've done the lecture and the challenging, but I truly respect you. And I thank you for what you do as opposition councillors. And let's be honest, 98% of the issues we're broadly in agreement on. We do work incredibly well and I'm always at pains to tell people in other parts of Scotland how well it works in Dundee. And that is because we have a really mature approach, both the administration, I think, and opposition members. We wouldn't have the same camaraderie or certainly engagement in the way that we do if we were in, say, Glasgow or any other part of the world where it is often fisticuffs at 12 o'clock. So I thank you for that as well and the collegiate approach that you take. Because what is abundantly clear to me is we have good councillors who care and who want to deliver something positive in their communities. And I also want to pay homage to officers who have had an incredible opportunity to work alongside over 12 years. And like elected members, there are many talented, passionate officers who are good people, decent people, who want to do the best for the communities in which they serve and they also are resident. And I can think back over my tenure from the early days as Deputy Convenor of Housing to being thrust into the convenership when Jimmy Black decided to step down 13 months later in the horror for me at that point. But I was supported by good officers, by good teams, and that has continued throughout my tenure. I'll also be honest that I've also really enjoyed watching officers squirm on occasion, both in this chamber but also as Chair of the interview panel for the last seven years. And I've had the good fortune of seeing how senior officers have performed and how that passion came through that process as well. And I want to thank each and every one of you for making the last 12 years as in some ways enjoyable but challenging. We need to be honest about the scale of those challenges, but we can't make the progress that we've been discussing tonight without good officers and good councillors. I suppose lastly, I want to speak to the city. And as I reference those challenges and the opportunities that are on the horizon, I am, as we all are, very proud Dandorians. And my love for the city will continue no matter what role I have. I think the challenges continue to escalate, continue to grow. But the way in which we approach that, the honesty, the integrity that the 29 elected members have taken forward is a real testament to the city and the people that we represent. And I'm really proud to have been your colleague for that period of time. And I want to say a couple of further things and then I'll stop talking. You'll be pleased to hear. And I also want to say how delighted I am for my friend and colleague, Mark Flynn. And also to reference the fact that we now have the leader-elect and the leader of the opposition as Major Bruce Springsteen fans. I don't know whether that's a good thing or not, but clearly the commonality will hopefully stand as a good stead going forward as well. And the previous Chief Executive did actually buy me, when I was elected as leader of the council, a set of training wheels as a joke, because I often referred to him as the dinosaur and he referred to me as the baby-faced council leader. So I'm making sure that I open those stabilisers as I move into a new role in the private sector, because I'm certain I'll need them going forward as well. I've also had numerous conversations, some from colleagues in this chamber as well, which I'm incredibly grateful for reaching out and giving me your good thoughts and your support. And I've also been offered numerous board positions from some of the charities and organisations, which if I take up, I will also be divorced. So I'm going to have to leave a little bit of time between the two things in terms of my retirement and perhaps looking at some of those. But I have many happy memories. I have also many sad memories of my time. But what's important, I think, is the experience, the hard work, the passion and thoroughly decent people that I've had the good fortune to work with. I think it's often an underappreciated area of work. Councillors, council officers are incredibly underappreciated. If only people out there knew how hard you worked and how passionate you were. And I promise you that as an ex-councillor in a couple of weeks' time, I will continue to bang the drum for all of you and to support you in whatever you do, because I know how vitally important your role is. So as I sign off on my final committee, I just want to say thank you once again. You'll be pleased to hear that is the business.
Unfortunately not.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Always that. Oh, God, right, okay. I was hoping I could get away with it.
Yeah, go away with nothing.
Who was first? Councillor Flynn.
Yes, I think John, I'm not going to call you convenor because you've just closed it. So I think saying John's probably the right way to go forward because as a friend and colleague, I think your passion and love for the city is clear to be seen. And I know you're going to hate this. People are talking about you and giving you praise left, right and centre, but to be completely honest, you deserve it. You've talked about the city, you've presented the city in a way which is going to be a real challenge, I have to say, going forward. But I think that's the important part and you've always had your discussions with anybody, whether it be at local level or national level. And Dundee has always been first. The people in the city has always been first and I think that's got to be acknowledged and appreciated. I know you're going to hate this, as I said, we've got a number of people waiting to talk about all the great stuff you've done and the cross-party working that you've done, because you've always had an open door policy and I will continue to do that as well. And I think I'll go back to the time when I first met you, many, many years ago, I'll make you feel even younger, being the same age as my oldest son. The similarities are very clear to be seen. Your love for the country as well and the independence campaign has always been at your heart as in this SNP group. And we will continue to fight for that in our way forward. And I'm sure you'll join us on the campaign trail as much as you can, even in your new role. We like to wish you all the best. I think that's important. I think it's an important decision you've made. I think your family has always come first and I think it's family first for every single person in this chamber. And I think even as we talked about earlier on with Comes From Alone and his love for his family, we all have that love for our own families. And I think the decision you've made for yourself, Sarah and the boys, I think you'll really welcome the future you'll have with them and the new direction, your new chapter in your life. And I wish you and the family all the best and thanks very much for your efforts as a councillor. You've been excellent. As a leader, you've been even more impressive and you've taken us all along with you. You've always been there to give us advice, support and guidance, which is the important part in any form of leadership. And I take that point, you're just pass it on to other people to make their comments. But thank you very much, John. It's been a pleasure working with you in the council. Hope to see you in the future. And as I said, we're friends, colleagues, but more importantly, a friend. And I think that's important. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I look forward to heckling from up there at future meeting indeed. Fraser.
Thanks, John. On behalf of my group and a couple of members of my group, want to say a few personal words as well a bit later on. But on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group, we couldn't really let your final committee go past without recognising your contribution both to the council and to the city as leader of the council since obviously 2017, but obviously as a convenor and a deputy convenor prior to that. Whilst there are political disagreements across the chamber from time to time, we'll not dwell on that tonight. But I think we can all agree with a point that you made when you announced your resignation from politics. And that is you've put in a shift. I think we can all, all 28 of the other ones on the council and the officers can agree with that. There's a lot of commitment has to go in to being leader of the council. And we thank you very much for your service over the time you've been on the council, the last 12 years. So on behalf of our group, can we wish you, Sarah, your family, all the very best and every success in your new career? Thank you, John.
Thank you. That's really kind of you, Fraser. I appreciate it. Thank. Bill.
Thank you, John. I'm not going to say anything that I've never said to you before, so there's no shots coming. But I try, as Lord Provost, very hard to remain apolitical. And I will try not to drift off of that in this statement. But John, so many positive attributes. I don't have to go into political praise. Anyway. We graduated in the class of 2012, along with the Deputy Lord Provost Kevin. I hadn't realised you were 23 at the time. I thought you were about 21. Because I was in my mid-50s, remember thinking you could be my grandson legally. But now you can't if you were 23. So that's, I don't know if I'm shocked at that or happy with it, but whatever, that's that. But I should learn to respect you as a personable young man who was clearly a leader in waiting. I thought you had a natural gift. And you have a special talent and it's very difficult to get annoyed with you, no matter what you're saying. And that's annoying in itself to the person, person doing it. You know, I'm a huge science fiction fan and I used to think with your very thin physique, your height, and I still think your peculiarly long elongated fingers, John, like the creatures in Close Encounters, if anyone's seen the movie. There was a touch of alien about you. And I used to think as a treacher, you'd make a great Mr Spock, but there's one huge difference in that. Where Spock held his emotions and you're a very compassionate human being. You're very friendly, you're caring, you're a people person, a great family man. You're just a great human being, John, and you're a natural leader. I will miss your advice, your intellect and most of all, your patience in helping me as a digital dinosaur, a kind of provisorus, if you like. Thank you for all you have done for Dundee. Your legacy will remain long your way. You'll be an inspiration to future, future politicians, I'm sure. And I wish you every success in your new direction. So live long and prosper.
Likewise, Bill. Thank you. I don't know to be insulted or not, but I'll take it in the way it was intended. So thank you for that. Stuart.
Yeah, thank you, John. As we as conveners, they are all, you know, hobbits, diehard. I think of all the people in the room, the person who's got mission most is me. Sometimes I get emotional. We've been ward colleagues for 12 years. And, you know, it was a rocky start because I took the huff of the fact that Alexander's above Hunter on the ballot paper. And, you know, your votes over the years have dragged me back every single election. But over those 12 years, I think I said this to you, I genuinely don't think there are two ward colleagues anywhere in Scotland who have worked better together. And I think that's because of respect, listening, lack of ego. And I think you've carried that into your leadership over the last seven years. And I will certainly miss the many conversations we've had before meetings in the ward, just having chats and catch-up. I will miss that every single time. You mentioned LinkedIn earlier on and when you put on LinkedIn, your announcement that you were going, the variety of people who came forward and said, paid tribute to you, thanked you, I think is a credit yourself. And I think sometimes people don't realise how much you've done for the city, how often you've been out the city, championing it, speaking to organisations all over country, all over the world. I've made a huge difference. And I think, you know, that was really testament in the comments I saw on LinkedIn. I actually was going to pay tribute to one other person and that's Sarah. Because, you know, you've put in so much for the city, you've been away a lot of times and missed family time. And Sarah's picked it up and looked after the family and supported you unbelievably. And I think it's, you know, a lot of credit goes to Sarah as well. Perhaps in a couple of months' time, she's maybe wishing that you were back here and she gets peace again. But as I said to you when, you know, we had that conversation just after you announced to the group, you were going, you're making the best decision for you, Sarah and the boys, and you're absolutely doing the right thing. We'll miss you, but your family comes first and you're making the right decision.
Thank you. And just to say, I had a big section about Sarah and the boys, but I couldn't get through it. So Sarah told me to take it out and I always do as I'm told, as you know. So, but thank you. You're absolutely spot on. Without Sarah and the boys, I'd be nothing. So appreciate that. Michael.
Thank you, John. And I don't want to take too much time. I know a lot of people will want to come in. But I did want to say a few things, John. I don't agree with every policy you champion and by no means I'm a lover of your party. But I, even I, certainly can't fault your commitment and drive for this city. And I, in a political landscape where a lot of people are criticised, especially on social media, I've been reading some comments, I think they're extremely unfair, because I think you are an extremely decent man and decent individual. And you have been a great servant for the city, but in politics in general. I wish you and your family the best, but you will be remembered because in Councillor Ken Lynn's room, there is a shrine for yourself, I believe. So I believe that will be kept up. So you will be remembered and I wish you all the best in future.
Thank you. I think he's going to take that down this evening, but appreciate your comments, Michael. It's really nice of you. Stephen.
And thanks, John. I honestly, I don't know where to start. And I think, so I came in obviously in a violation and in sad circumstances. And ever since those early days, John has been a mentor and a friend and a colleague and a truly inspiring figure to call, a horrifically inspiring figure, a terrifying figure at times. It's a bit like one of these snowflakes when you think you see the size of things and you pan out and you pan out and you pan out. I think it's been said before, but so many people in the city don't know how much of a shift John has sent in. And I'm maybe starting to realise now from the testimonies from all these different people. And I'm really glad you've taken your own advice. You've always said to the group, put family first, put family first, take time off for illness, take time off for paternity. So I'm delighted, whether Sarah's prevailed upon you or not, that you've followed your own advice to do that. And much as a loss for the group and for the city as a whole. And so I'll maybe just finish by saying no goodbye, especially because I hope to go for drinks later. But au revoir and I hope we see you having another role in the city at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. That's really kind of you. Daniel.
Thanks, Johnny. I certainly echo the comments of what's been said and personally thank you for your service to the city as well. You said to me the other day, John, you know, we've been more colleagues for, you know, only two years, but indeed we worked together for many years before that when I was on the youth council. And indeed, as time moves on, that neither of us would now no longer actually qualify to serve on. And indeed, as time moves on, that neither of us would now no longer actually qualify to serve on the youth council. But two personal matters, and we were both educated by one famous Mrs. Mug, and I think that shows in how we approach our roles in life. And I will certainly do the best to carry on that standard in the chamber going forward. And you spoke of commonality earlier on, well, indeed, all four Strathmartin councillors, I believe, the new SNP group leader, the Lord Provost, the Deputy Lord Provost, they indeed were my own group colleagues, they're all indeed good Arabs. So I think that's a good strain of commonality to have. And perhaps if the by-election goes, whoever results will keep that one hundred per cent record up for Strathmartin. But all very much the best in your new job and do take care.
Thanks very much, Daniel. That's really kind of you. Heather?
Thank you, John. I wasn't going to say anything, but I think I've got a slightly different perspective, because I've been away from Dundee for a long time. And I was so thrilled to get the chance to come back home and work with you. And what you need to know is that all over Scotland, people go, God, Dundee, amazing things are happening in Dundee. Dundee's just absolutely brilliant. And I spoke to the leader of the new climate intelligence service, and she said, oh, we love Dundee. Dundee's in the fast lane. Dundee's way out there. And it was just to make sure that you hear that that is down to your leadership and your vision. And with your leadership and vision and all the council officers and the people here, you've put Dundee back on the map and you've reinvented this city. And the city is indebted to you for that and never forget that. And you're a really young man. Bill said you could be his grandson. You could certainly be my son. I wish you so well in what you do next, but you're going to be enormously big shoes to fill. But thank you for everything that you've done.
Thanks, Emma. That's really appreciated. Really kind of you. Kevin?
I'd better bring you to the earth a wee bit, John. Well, it's all nobody's cool, it's be anything like a Lord Provost by suggesting you're an alien.
It's class.
Right? And in reality, you're making the decision, and it's a good decision for your family, and that's the bit that really matters. This is a cruel world that we live in, and the cruel world that we live in is you live the election and die the election. And whilst at the moment you might be the leader of the council on another election, you could be on a basic council site. So it's right that you make that decision for your family. It's starting the world to work, because if you leave it too much later, that opportunity wouldn't necessarily be there. So I think you make the right decision for your family, and I wish you well. And I hope you can make a few career moves and deliver you a better rate and all the rest of us can move on through life. So I do wish you well on that, and your family.
Thanks very much, Kevin. Thank you. Appreciate that. Analyn?
Everybody needs a journeyman, and you were my journeyman when I came in. You've left without putting me in charge of lobbies, but I'll let you off. And I was listening, interestingly, earlier, and I heard that councillor McCarvin and the Lord Provost were on the first round. So we'll see you there. Thank you, John.
Thank you. And apologies again, colleagues, for prolonging the agony of this evening. But as I said before, I wish you all the best in your future endeavours, and I will champion you and support you in any way that I can. But thank you. I'm indebted to all of you. And have a lovely evening and get yourselves away. Thank you.